Want to call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I just have a couple of formalities that you take care of before we get to the main event of entertainment for the evening. Oh, I don't need to adopt the agenda right now, we can go right into it, right? Okay, perfect, never mind. Doug, you're up. Adoption of agenda for regular meeting. Under provisions of the Public Heavens Law of the State, Missouri law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Tuesday, December the 12th, 2017, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. The motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. And Ms. Harge, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mrs. Pondre.
Aye.
Mrs. Holcby.
Aye.
Mrs. Secretary of Defense.
Aye.
Dr. Corning, please.
Aye.
And Mrs. Swimmer.
Aye.
So, tonight, Dr. Thurman is not with us, she is under the weather, so please keep her in her gloves. And we also have a couple of the board members who are kind of hanging in there, so I promise them a quick meeting, as they look out to the audience for those that are going to speak. Alright, McClure swimmer makes her trip to state meet.
I would like to invite Drew Talent to the finals with Dr. Graves and Dr. Davis. So Drew. Congratulations to McClure High School senior Drew Talent on a stellar end to an amazing high school swimming career. His hard work and commitment to the sport paid off at the state swim meet, class one, in early November with a fifth-place finish in the 100 butterfly with a time of 53.81 seconds, and a ninth-place finish in the 100 backstroke with the fifth overall fastest time of 55.54 seconds. This is Drew's third trip to the state swim meet. I have more. Drew consistently won events throughout his senior swim season and became a known and respected adversary for many teams in the region. He holds school records in three individual events: backstroke, butterfly, and 500 freestyle. He broke his own school records in the backstroke and butterfly this year. Drew holds the pool record at McClure South Berkeley, McClure's home pool, in the backstroke butterfly, 500 freestyle, 50 freestyle, and individual medley. Drew has accomplished all of this while maintaining a 4.34 record. And he has scored in world at St. Louis Community College, Florissant Valley campus. Drew was selected by the Missouri Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association to be part of the all-state swim team. After graduation, Drew plans on attending Missouri University of Science and Technology to pursue a major in mechanical engineering. His swimming coach, Annie Cook, is with us this evening, his principal, Mr. Gerald, and his senior principal, Mr. Ford, if you gentlemen would like to come up and join us. In addition, I'd like to ask his parents and his granddad is here, so if they'd stand or join us.
Come up and take pictures.
Yes.
Up next, we have the McClure South Berkeley educator inducted into Lincoln University Band Hall of Fame.
Good evening. The Ferguson, Florissant School District is pleased to announce that McClure South Berkeley band instructor, Terrell Stringer, was inducted into the Lincoln University Band Hall of Fame. Mr. Stringer earned his bachelor's degree from Lincoln and is a proud alumni. Mr. Stringer exemplified those Hall of Fame qualities at MSB through the loss of two of his band members during this difficult year. Thank you, Mr. Stringer, for your leadership, and congratulations on your induction into the Hall of Fame.
Yes.
Band members will be happy to go into their public audience this season, and I tell you what, if you're ever in a bad mood, come listen to the band play, right? Don't motivate you, energize you, so great job, thank you.
Alright, next one. Berkeley Middle School Nurse Recognized by March of Dimes.
Good evening. Each year, the March of Dimes receives hundreds of applicants across several nursing categories. These applicants are reviewed and scored by high-ranking nurse leaders. Through the competitive process, finalists within each category are selected. The March of Dimes is proud to announce that the Berkeley Middle School Nurse, Paulette Renee Luckett, is a 2017 finalist for the Case Management Nurse of the Year. That's awesome, like Nurse of the Year. Congratulations and thank you, Ms. Luckett, for your service and care that you dedicate to the students each and every day at Berkeley Middle School.
Alright, each month, the communications team will present a short video of district highlights and successes. This is the first of these monthly videos.
All across the Ferguson, Florissant School District, students are experiencing success. District students, staff, and community leaders brave the cold and ventured into the woods at Little Creek Nature Area to participate in the ribbon-cutting for the new Low Roads Course. Funded through the Missouri Foundation for Health, Healthy Schools, Healthy Community Grant, the Low Roads Course will challenge students, staff, and community members through several activities requiring collaboration, problem-solving, trust, and a little dairy. Students wasted no time getting on the course and having a ball. At the STEAM Academy, students are going deeper with project-based learning. Recently, 7th grade STEAM students presented their work to an audience of peers, parents, administration, and the public. Students worked collaboratively to design improvements to an exterior space at the STEAM Academy. Presentations included numerous required elements, a Q&amp;A with experts, and others in the audience. Following the presentations, students informally presented the results of their work through tabletop demonstrations to an enthusiastic audience. Cheryl Walker, Community Development Director of Steeple Banking Trust, brought the excitement of the dollar to Lee Hamilton Elementary School in the Ferguson, Florissant School District as November's Secret Evil. Secret Evils speak about how they were born to soar and how they have shown caring, respect, and self-control in their lives to be the successful people they are today. Ms. Walker spoke at the school assembly about the importance of saving and investing money with a fun activity that engaged all 328 students. Stories like Ms. Walker's show our students that they can do anything they want with hard work and determination. McClure vocalists received a treat when Grammy nominee Jane Monhyte, a jazz and pop singer, taught a masterclass at the school. Monhyte was in St. Louis performing at Jazz de Bistro. Several of the students demonstrated their vocal skills for Miss Monhyte, who provided invaluable feedback as she critiqued their work. Two seniors at McClure South Berkeley High School are getting real-world business experience in their internships at the Centene Corporation as part of the supervised business experience program offered in the Ferguson, Florissant School District. Casey Harden and LaShaw Harper, both seniors at McClure South Berkeley, have enjoyed the vast learning opportunities their internship has provided them. As part of their day-to-day duties, they work with organizational teams, process patient data, field calls, and work to satisfy Centene's overall metrics. The students split their day with classes in the morning and then head to their internship at Centene for the afternoon. You can learn more about these and other examples of great learning in our school website and social media.
For those that have printed copies of the agenda, there's a pad on, that's on our screen, that didn't make an online print copy. And then, what's that? Oh, they do have with the corrected, okay. Alright, thanks. Alright, just this. This portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video for the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and to the community.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of December. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. While it took two tries, but Governor Greitens has now achieved his goal of removing Margie Van Devene as Commissioner of Education in Missouri. In a closed meeting on December 1st, the State Board of Education voted to fire Van Devene on a five to three vote. All five of Governor Greitens' recent appointees to the Board voted to fire Van Devene, including one new member who was sworn in just minutes before the meeting. State Board President Charlie Shields, Vice President Dick Linds, and Member Mike Jones voted against the motion. The Board has appointed Deputy Commissioner Roger Dorson to serve as interim commissioner. At a previously called special closed meeting on November 21st, a motion to fire Van Devene failed on a four to four vote. The decision comes after weeks of turmoil surrounding Governor Greitens' appointments to the State Board and the announcement by one appointee, Melissa Gellner of Springfield, that the governor made her appointment conditional on the removal of Van Devene as commissioner and replacing her with a candidate of his own. Greitens withdrew her appointment after she indicated she was not prepared to fire Van Devene. He then removed another appointee to that seat, Tim Summers of Joplin, after he indicated he would not support firing the commissioner. The recent appointments sparked outrage by education groups, including MSBA, who maintain the constitutional authority to employ the commissioner, rests with the State Board, and that Governor Greitens' efforts to appoint only members who supported her removal would effectively make the position of commissioner a political appointee of the governor. During a news conference following the vote to remove Van Devene, State Board President Charlie Shields said the controversy of appointments brought the education community together in a way he has never seen.
In 30 years of being around this stuff, I have never seen the level of unanimity around the education community, where you've got superintendents, you've got principals' organizations, you've got MSBA, you've got NEAT, you've got MSTA, all singularly focused. And what I told the Board, and like I said, I can't tell what other people exist, but what I told the Board in that closed session, that there is an opportunity to do the right thing here and take advantage of it, everybody headed the same direction. And it is an opportunity that I've never seen take place, and we missed that opportunity today.
The news conference was attended by the three State Board members who voted against the motion to dismiss Van Devene and Van Devene herself. The five members voting for her removal did not participate, but left quickly after the closed session. Van Devene says she's sad to leave a job she was not ready to leave.
The job of Commissioner of Missouri is traditionally not a political role. But at the moment, political forces are eclipsing educational decisions. And although I didn't come to Jefferson City to fight, I'm willing to fight for children and teachers.
MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall issued a statement following the meeting that said, "We are extremely disappointed with the decision by the State Board of Education today. The State Board today effectively has made the Commissioner of Education a political appointee of the governor. This is a sad day for Missouri's public schools and the students they serve. We will continue to pursue efforts to ensure the State Board of Education remains independent and exercises its appropriate constitutional authority." State Board Member Mike Jones says the Board engaged in what he called "undemocratic behavior" in dismissing Van Devene.
I would argue that you made your voice heard. I'd also stipulate that you have a responsibility to obey every lawful statute that the department and this Board is required to enforce. But I would also argue today that this Board has lost its legitimacy as a governing body.
Jones is urging all Missourians to take a stand for public education.
Everybody in this state will have to make a judgment about two things: how much they care about public education, and how much they care about constitutional governance. Because public education is now at risk, and constitutional governance has been violated.
All five of the new appointees to the State Board of Education must still be confirmed by the State Senate, but a number of senators from both parties have expressed serious concerns about Governor Greitens' tactics in orchestrating the removal of Van Devene as commissioner, putting those confirmations in jeopardy when the Senate reconvenes in early January. State Board President Shields explains what happens now.
It appears to me that in the immediate future, this whole discussion now moves away from the State Board of Education, certainly moves to the courts where, you know, you have a case pending, but also moves to the State Senate, where you have five new members awaiting confirmation by the Senate. So I think the focus of a lot of this is going to move to venues outside of this building.
MSBA supported a lawsuit filed by State Board Appointee Tim Summers of Joplin. His suit claimed the governor did not follow the proper process for withdrawing his nomination. A Cole County Circuit Judge did not grant a temporary restraining order to reinstate him to the State Board of Education, but the judge also did not rule on the merits of the claim, so the legal issue remains unresolved, but still could have an impact on the validity of the vote to fire Van Devene. Shields says he's afraid a change in commissioners would stall the progress being made in Missouri's public schools.
What frustrates me is that, aside from the fact that I feel very strongly about this commissioner, is it's been my experience that any time you make a change in leadership, then you delay that progress. You step back for a period of time, and things stall out until everybody gets the beat back on the ground and you can continue to move forward. And I think that's what's going to happen. I think our progress is going to be delayed.
The next meeting of the State Board of Education is scheduled for January 9th in Jefferson City. A decision at the December State Board meeting that has been overshadowed by the firing of the commissioner was the upgrade in accreditation status for the Normandy Schools Collaborative from unaccredited to provisionally accredited. There are now no unaccredited school districts in Missouri. We congratulate everyone at Normandy for their outstanding work. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and the community. So first up will be Mr. Scott Eber.
Well, Merry Christmas, everybody. And doesn't that music just warm your heart? I'll tell you what, I'm looking so forward to Christmas this year, like I do every year. You should see my front yard. I'm like Mr. Griswold. First of all, I don't know, there's been, behind the scenes, there's been some emails about these reports from MSBA. Just like with any organization, there's good and there's bad. Using a line that's been used in this district from our legal team, I'm, this is just me talking here, I'm wondering if we aren't going on like a slippery slope here. I'm not in any way a Greitens supporter myself, yet when you present stuff like this, in my opinion, you know, worse Greitens side of the story, was even asked, does he get a, well, how long was that joke? Or somebody, does anybody know how long that thing was? Eight minutes, right? They just told me before the meeting that I need to stop yakking because people want to get home, you know? Well, all I'm saying, I mean, I mean, you know, we're a public entity, and we're going to talk about it behind the scenes, I guess, because, you know, where does it start and stop with political organizations? Again, I'm not trying to support or not support it, I'm just trying to say, I wonder, now, if Greitens says, "Well, I want eight minutes of your time," and we get another organization saying, "Well, I get eight minutes of your time," and they're talking about, you guys would be so happy that I'm up here talking versus all these videos we have to show to make it, you know, balanced or whatever. So that's just my point on it. So, let me just say one thing that I was just blown away with. I went to the STEAM school a couple times this month. Wow, you know, I know everybody says, "Get over there," but I got to see those presentation, whatever that day was called, you know, it was an evening, I forget what the, they had an evening where the kids displayed all their stuff, and not only displayed it, but they walked you through the process that the kids did, which really, really was enlightening to me. I didn't come prepared because I should have had a notepad. They talked about you being over there, and that has led to many, many requests for this, and this, and this, and that. And I kind of told them, everything come, you know, it's all money. They want that back fence all painted, yeah. But anyway, I hope everybody has a great, great holiday season with their loved ones. And I always say this every year, get a kid you haven't really talked to and be kind to them and give them a hug. And that's all I got.
Good evening. I have the talent management update for the district. The Grow Your Own Teacher Initiative is the first item. District and UMSL team members met on November 13th to discuss the creation of a new Grow Your Own Teacher Program. It was an enthusiastic meeting with more than 24 teachers in attendance. The next steps will be reviewing a future proposal by the UMSL College of Education that will create the mentoring framework for the program. The Ferguson, Florissant team's next goal is to expand the advanced credit placement classes offered that are education-focused. Next, I have an update about the November 27th Professional Development Day. Teachers, administrators, and staff participated in a PD on closed reading and text-dependent questions. They also engaged in additional PBIS training, and overall, the feedback from the staff was very positive about both events. That's all for my update, but I also just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. And it's just funny to me because this time last year at this board meeting was when I came up in the public comment section and said that I was running for school board. So it's kind of crazy to me, this is kind of a full-circle night. It's a little surreal that it's been an entire year. I haven't been on the Board for a whole year, but that the whole process, it's already a full year. So it's been a great year. So I'm really looking forward to the next two years. Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Well, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll be glad to.
Yeah, you, yeah.
The plant department, as well as the technology department, which are my strategic plans, have been working diligently to get things going for the winter, and next month, in January of 2018, they will be bringing to us some proposals to move us even further. And like everybody else, I want to wish you a Merry Christmas, and I hope that you will have an amazing New Year, and that we will move forward as a family. Thank you.
Ms. Harge?
Good evening. I feel bad because I've got five pages. The district is actively working to build community and engage stakeholders in a variety of meaningful ways. The Board administration participated in the Ferguson Northern Lights Parade on Sunday after Thanksgiving, and it was a great time. I'd like to give a huge thanks to McClure North Teacher and Ferguson resident, Tim Ryan, for his hard work on the float. It was beautiful and represented the district well. The McClure Junior RMTC students also looked sharp in their uniforms as they marched the parade route. And many of our student, staff, and board members participated in the parade as well. Thank you for coming out. On December 1st, the McClure Student Government students held their annual canned food drive. Student leaders collected canned goods from their peers, then traveled to Walnut Grove, Lee Hamilton, Bo, Griffin, Johnson, Wombash, and Ferguson Middle to collect their canned goods. The students then set up a grocery store at the First Presbyterian Church in Ferguson with the canned goods and made food baskets for 73 families in the Ferguson community. On December 4th, the district held a community forum at McClure South Berkeley High School, and there was a good turnout of community members, leaders, staff, and students that evening. Be sure to take advantage of opportunities to share your thoughts as the district works through the process of assessing our current situation and planning for the future. And be sure to come out and support the Ferguson Farmers Market with their winter market from 9 to 12. At the St. Stevens Cathedral Church, 33 North Clay in Ferguson is moved inside because of the cold. Ferguson Youth Initiative also has a booth come out and support them as well. And remember the district website, fercfloor.org, the location to find all information for stakeholders, including links to many other resources, including parent portal, menus, staff directories, and much more. And I want to encourage all parents to use the parent portal regularly to stay encouraged with your child's education. Also, please be sure your contact information is up to date on the portal as well, due to winter officially begins next week, and we want to be able to keep you informed of any weather-related changes. And these are just some of the ways the Ferguson, Florissant Food District is building connections with stakeholders for the benefits of all students. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'm sorry, I'm out of the weather, so I was able to get my hugs, so here's a holiday hug to all of you. Thank you.
And since Dr. Thurman is not here, we're going to have Garrett give the report to Coram.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent and my Ferguson, Florissant family. Happy to be here to present on behalf of Dr. Thurman. Just want to talk a little bit about Coram goes. I'll try to be brief. She got quite a bit of information, but November has been a very, very busy month for the entire school district. Just some of the things that we've kind of focused on in the month of November is really just kind of pinpointing all schools, implementing our Tier One with fidelity. That's been very important, and that's really about school universals. The second thing we've really paid a lot of attention to is to have schools to work to secure and improve student-staff relationships. And I say staff relationships because we know that we're all in this together, everywhere, from the Board to custodians, to bus drivers, you name it. It's really about that relationship that we all have with students. Thirdly, is really working on school and family connections. And what we mean by that is really communication. You know, our families want communication, and that's important, and we can do that through a number of ways, not only personal communication face-to-face, but also using media and technology. So that's been extremely important. We've worked hard on that. And fourth, as every adult working in school knows and understands what PBIS is really all about. It's really about creating a culture, a positive culture, for all students and all individuals in our schools. Another thing that we've done during November, we've taken a look at data. We know that data drives everything that we do in schools. So what we've really asked the schools to do is look at really four key questions when you're talking about data. One is, what does the data suggest about our schools? What is surprising or unexpected about our data? What additional data needs to be explored? And what conclusions might we draw from our data? Now, I'm not going to go through all the things that were revealed from the data, but what I will say is that because we've taken a real deep and analyzed the data in all of our schools, we know that our schools, we know that we're going in the right direction, and that's important. I do want to mention three key things that we know as the administrators in the district that we know we have to continue to push, and that's intense PBIS training for all staff, we have to create that climate. Secondly, relationship building between staff and students. And thirdly, and we've all received a personal challenge from the superintendent on this, is personal accountability for all staff, you know, regardless of what our areas may be, taking that personal accountability to do the best job that we can for all the students that we serve. And lastly, I'd like to just mention real quickly, we had the opportunity on December 6th to present our problem of practicing our cohort groups at the Harvard for the Harvard Triad Session, and I think most, some of the members are here, and if they're here, the cohort for the Ferguson-Florissant team, just ask them to stand real quick.
The cohort?
The Harvard.
This was all the work that we've done at Harvard in the last two years, and it was just exciting as we participated in this session. Just some of the initiatives real quickly that we had an opportunity to cover in this session was actually, we actually talked a lot about, you know, our equity resolution developed by the board, we talked about our revised expectation student code, that was extremely important. We've talked a lot about our district organization help instrument that we're actually doing a lot of work on in this district, talked about the Network for Educational Effectiveness, in particularly 5.3B, which really pinpoints relationships. We had a lot of conversations about our mentoring program, Elevate, which is going to be gearing up at McClure, our Freshman Academy, and then lastly, our student risk screening scale, which we know is really going to be the key of pinpointing students when they may be experiencing some difficulty. So this is just some of the work that we're doing in the district, and I'm just happy to be a part of it, and I do want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. Hope the board feels better, I know some of you are.
Dr. Graves?
I will be brief, my portion is the student achievement, as I'm looking through my list, I was like, okay, I was going to talk about PBIS, that's been talked about, I was going to talk about professional development, that's been talked about, I was going to talk about STEAM, that's also been talked about, so...
That's like Gary's talk, far.
Exactly, and then, yeah. So, but what I do want to say is, I first want to commend Kevin and his team in regards to the new agenda item, the Shared Images of Success. I think that is something that I've been talking about for a while in regards to us doing a better job of sharing our story, so just showing that and really putting that out in regards to what we're doing in each of our buildings every day is very important, and it's valid in regards to why we do what we do and why we're here today. So I just want to commend Kevin and his team on exactly doing just that. And then lastly, I just want to say just the importance of self-care, just make sure that you are taking care of yourselves during this holiday season, and happy holidays.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a moment of full disclosure, the video from MSBA is one that I did not want to show tonight, and the reason is, and State Board President Shields talked about a missed opportunity, that I was pretty frustrated with it because it was seven and a half minutes talking about the firing of the Education Commissioner, which is very important news, I mean, it's been all over print and electronic media, and the last few months, it's been the main focus of their videos. But we have a school district, Normity School District, who at one time was probably at the very bottom of the entire state of Missouri in regards to their state standards, who had state takeover, who their financial coffers were drained as a result of the transfer program, they closed schools, and they get 30 seconds. And for me, those are the stories I really want to hear about and how they did that. When our APR came out, you know, that I had talked about that throughout the state of Missouri, there are schools who are doing some great things, and, you know, that we need to reach out to them, and Normity's doing something, and they deserve a very loud applause for that. And I really feel that MSBA is just utterly consumed with the firing of the commissioner. Again, it's important, but here in our school district, in Normity, in Riverview, and elsewhere, right here on the ground level, you know, we're struggling and we're fighting, and when they start talking about, you know, the progress in, in public schools right now from the State Board's perspective, I don't see it. I, I think what progress is made is because of the people in this room, not because of them in Jeff City, and for them to sit there and applaud themselves and pat themselves on the back, I think is an absolute disservice to every parent, every teacher, every district employee, students, the board, you know, and I really wish MSBA would kind of sit back and refocus and really think about what their priorities are, because right now I think it's just completely off rails at this time, so. That's my little commentary, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday and Happy Holidays, thank you. So, Lori, you're up, right?
Good evening, Board, and I mean, thank you for this opportunity again. One of the things I wanted to just briefly talk to you guys about is, when you asked me to come back and start doing this again, you, it was, I felt like you wanted to know the pulse of what some of the members are saying to us as well. One of the items on here, I just wanted to let you know the block scheduling is causing some consternation out amongst teachers, so, not that in, how do I say this wrong? I think there is some perceptions on both sides. Our teachers are feeling a little bit like they have not had as many opportunities as they would like to be a part of some committee work or to, to get their voice heard as far as this. I think there's also some concern about the fact that this will take a lot of professional development, and also this evening, you guys will be presented a first read of a calendar that has quite a bit of room on it for professional development, but most of those days are already bespoke. So, just, I wanted to let you know that there is some concern out there amongst our secondary teachers about just exactly how this will look, how they will make sure that they get the professional development they need, and just making sure that they're a part of this whole process, so, just wanted to throw that out there. And once again, I really thank you for this opportunity to let you guys know what people are saying to me, and have a great holiday. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Yes. So we've got, have quite a few teachers here tonight, I think, or at least a couple I saw, maybe some left with the students, but for those teachers that were staying, all of our teachers that have remained, new teachers? Yeah, let's get our teachers. Those who support teachers, where are you? Everybody else? Give our folks a round of applause, give our folks a round of applause, absolutely. So, you know, I will say that, you know, it's important to me that people's voices are always heard, and so I hope that, you know, my work and the messages I sent out are ones where people feel a part of the conversation and not being talked to, but being talked with, because to me, that's important. And I don't just say it because it sounds good, because it does sound good to give teachers voice, because I'm a teacher at heart, but it is really giving people opportunities to be a part of them, and so that's really important to me. You know, before I go further, though, I do want to take an opportunity to present to you all for the first time ever, Dr. Danikis and...
Oh, nice.
Congratulations, guys. That should have come Saturday, right? So it was, it was a great ceremony, I had an opportunity to go, and we actually had three people to graduate this past Saturday, and I was really, really excited about, you know, them finishing their doctorates and just, you know, just working really hard, so congratulations to her for receiving her, for receiving her doctor. Also, I want to say against our students, they've gone already, but they, they did a great job, and they're thinking in schools, arts are always a part of the work itself, and that is pretty important. I know the last advisory committee meeting we had, we mentioned, had a deeper conversation about the arts, and I know Dr. Irwin and many others who teach in the arts are at the table, and I think that's important, that we not only look at instructional practices during core classes, but in all classes, because they have implications all around. Learning is all the time, not just in math, science, English, and social studies. Couple of announcements, and I'll be done. We have a legislative breakfast this Saturday, so we're really excited about the breakfast this Saturday, that'll be at the STEAM school. We invited several mayors and council people from the various municipalities that are part of Ferguson-Florissant, and it is to strengthen the communication among all of our municipalities within our attendance zone for our students. We have also Monday night, December 18th, our profile of a graduate committee meeting, and we'll be presenting some of that information to the board as we move forward over the next couple of months, but it specifically will focus on what kind of student are we trying to build at Furt Floor? What does that look like? And we want to make sure that we have voices at the table and input, because that's critical, so that when we come away with a final product, people feel like it's, they've been a part of the discussion. We will be talking a little bit later on about block scheduling and having some conversation about that, and be more than happy to take any questions we have. We'll come back in January with an update on our Two Billion Word Challenge, because we constantly push that, reading, reading, read, and then I, as Gary said earlier, not just me, everybody, everybody needs to take personal responsibility for our children and their outcomes, and, you know, sometimes it sounds like you're preaching to the choir, but you have to constantly say it, because everybody doesn't take personal responsibility for the work, and I think it's important that we all do, that means a whole lot when kids, every individual child has an adult who's thinking about their well-being all the time, and that'll always happen, and we want to make sure that it does, so I'm grateful for, for people who really believe that. So with that, that's my report for this evening, and I do want to say to everyone, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, thank you very much. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or requested to speak from the podium, please identify themselves, and in keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president, I, may, may clarify remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board tonight? None? All right, and we shall move on. Declaration of candidacy, the three-year terms of Ferguson-Florissant school board members, Dr. Courtney Graves and Mr. Scott Ebert expire in April of 2018. Declarations of candidacy may be picked up at the office of the superintendent at 10051 for Drive, Florissant, Missouri. Under Missouri law, the first day to file is pending was on Tuesday, December the 12th, 2017, and that was at 8:00 a.m. The filing will close at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. All other filings will occur between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on days when the district is open. School district offices will be closed Friday, December the 22nd through Friday, January 5th, 2018. The annual election for the Board of Education is going to be Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, and a person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, and a resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures, file a declaration of candidacy and line up for filing pursuant to District Policy 4013, which we had already done, and I understand it's Dr. Courtney Graves and Mr. Scott Ebert have refiled again, once again, so, that's all I have on that. The consent agenda, Ms. Harge, would you please read the dispersments?
Yeah, payroll teacher, everybody here, payroll teacher and non-teacher, 8,839,9167. Operational dispersments is 3,333,50942, which makes a total of 12,173,42109.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, seconded.
Motion permitted, seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Motion passed. And at this time... Okay, at this time, Dr. Gialli is going to give his report on the annual report of student achievement and annual performance report.
Good evening. Tonight, as Mr. Shobat indicated, I will be talking to you about our achievement levels, what has happened in our district in the past year, also go over our Missouri School Improvement Program, MSIP, and talking about APR, which is our annual performance report. Having that said, I will start with a number, and tonight I will be talking a lot about different numbers, and those numbers, mostly I refer to them as MPI, which is a MAP Performance Index Point. Before I start the presentation, visualize that you're a teacher, you're teaching a class, you have 25 students, and you give them a grade at the end, give them some As, Bs, Cs, and Bs, and Dr. Davis comes and says, how did you do this year? You say, I had said I gave seven As, four Bs, five Cs, and three Fs. The next year he comes, so how did you do compared to the year before? And if you give different numbers, six As, four Bs, and so forth, it's very difficult to digest it. Did you do better this year than the year before? So this is doing the similar thing with our district in terms of looking at only one number which really quantifies all those grade spans. Those grade spans, from this's perspective, they use these four distinct levels, below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced. When they are looking at those, they have a certain multiplier for each level. For example, every time a student is in below basic, they say that number times one. Every time a student's at basic level, they say that multiplied by factor of three, proficient times factor of four, and advanced times factor of five. Having that said, let's just say, 100% of our students, if they are at below basic, well, two things are going to happen. If 100% are in below basic, multiplier is one, MAP index point becomes 100, that's the first thing that's going to happen. The second thing is, Dr. Davis is going to fire all of us. Now, if 100% of our students are in basic, the multiplier was three, so MAP index point becomes 300. 100% proficient, 400, and if 100% advanced, 500. Why am I making this, spending a lot of time on this? So when I, tonight, throughout my presentation, when I say MAP index point of 312, you can visualize where does it fall within that spectrum? 100 to 300 is below basic, 300 to 400, basic, and so forth. Having that said, we are going to start with looking at our English Language Arts, our elementary grades three and four. As you see on the screen, on the top chart, I'm presenting three years of data, and this chart I'll spend a little time, because the remainder charts are very similar to this one. So we are looking at the top of the chart, looking at year 2015, which MAP index point of 246.1, 2016, 279, and last year, 276.1. The next chart underneath, it shows how the entire state of Missouri did in the same grade level. Differences, obviously, but now you can have a multidimensional perspective about how we're doing from one year to the next, as well as looking at how state is doing. In some cases, state increased, in some cases, state didn't go as much as we went up, and those are the variations I'd like you to look at. It is worth mentioning that in 2015, which is the first chart that I'm showing on this, we had a new assessment in the state, 2016 we have a new assessment, and 2017, so the assessments have changed. So I'll let you look at this grade three, compare it to the state, look at our own improvements from one year to the next. If I look at from 2015, 2017, obviously we had improvement, however, from 2016 to 17, we had a slight drop, and you can see similar trends for grade four, obviously we have been going up as the state has been doing. The next few charts that I go through is very similar concept, I'm not going to repeat it, but... The next few charts that I go through is very similar concept. I'm not gonna repeat it, but I just wanted us to have an understanding how we are comparing these numbers. Next one, I'm going to look at grades five and six. The same concept, how we did versus how state did. And the bottom part, grade six. Next, we are going to look at grades three and four in math compared to the state. I will continue by looking at grades five and six for our district as well as the state. And I just need to remind that in English Language Arts and math, state has been using different tests since year 2015. And that brings me to the next part that when I talk about, you hear phrases such as hold harmless. That's where it comes in effect that if you're changing a test, how you expect us to follow a certain pattern, show improvement. This is a completely new test. That's why they allow us in English Language Arts and math to use the best of the three years, as per say. I'm going to go and talk to you about grade five in science. Only grade five in elementary level tests on science, so we can see our scores versus state scores for the past three years. Next, we are going to go and look at in secondary levels, which I'm sharing with you, grade seven, eight, and English two in high school. Now, if you look at grade seven, I have our district listed, I have state listed, and grade eight the same way. However, in English two, unfortunately, if you look at the bottom right of the screen, English two is not included 2017 due to comparability issues. Trying to nicely say that the testing company screwed up. Next, I'm going to go and look at our math, the same area, grade seven, eight, and algebra one. So end of course, English two and algebra one was not used for the purpose of evaluating our annual performance report. Next, I will go and look at our science data, which on the secondary level would be grade eight and biology one. If I'm going too fast, please let me know. I can speed it up a couple more notches. Next, we are going to look at social studies. And one of the things is, obviously stands out, we have definitely been making significant and statistically significant improvement within the past three years. Which is on government. Next, I will look at our English Language Arts. And this time, I'm going to share with you, again, earlier I mentioned there are four distinct levels. Below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced. And I mentioned that the multiplier for below basic is one. Basic is three, proficient four, and advanced five. So I like us to look at an English Language Arts to see what percentage of our students are in below basic. I'm sharing with you three years of data, so you can look, are the numbers decreasing from 2015 to 17? That's one aspect you can look at. And the other one is, what percentage of our students are in below basic? Meaning getting multiplied by factor of one, consequently our MAP index point fluctuating. These red numbers are below basic. The next one are the percentage of students in the basic. You can add the two up. You'll know the bottom two level versus the top two level, which were the subtraction of the sum of those two numbers from 100. This is in our elementary levels, grades three, four, five, and six. You can guess, the next one is going to be our math, the same concept, grades three, four, five, and six. And in some of the grade levels, as you can see, from 2015, even I'm looking at these numbers, from 2015 to 2017, every one of those grade spans, we had had a significant drop in the bottom, in the below basic, obviously. Next, I'll look at science. And this is very significant to have much smaller in below basic. That's what I mentioned by that gets multiplied one, and the next level is multiplied by three. So if I just look at this thing, would be 22, the last 2017, would be 22 plus three times 50. So 150 plus 22. If I want to put in the perspective of the numbers, how significantly can change our MAP index point? Next, I'm going to look at our secondary levels on English Language Arts, which is grade seven, eight, and English two. 2007, I cannot show it for English two because of errors in the test. However, as you can see, the percentage of students in our secondary levels are far less in below basic than grade seven and eight. These are the percentage of students in basic level. That's in English Language Arts. Next, we look at mathematics, same concept. Next, we look at science. Which, science on secondary levels are in grade eight and biology one. Next, we are going to look at social studies for the past three years in government. To continue on that one. Now we are going to look at our MSIP, Missouri School Improvement Program. All these number and the fluctuations at the end of the day will determine our accreditation standards. Now, we have five standards that we are evaluated from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's perspective. The first one is academic achievement. The second one is subgroup achievement. The third one is college and career readiness. Fourth one is attendance rate, and fifth one is graduation rate. Each one of them, they have their own subcategories that I go through. But those are those five standards that we are evaluated based on. If I go and I start sharing with you academic, for example, the first standard academic achievement, you'll see that it's broken down into each one of those four content area. English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. When I'm looking at this table, right now, if you look, I see as I'm moving the mouse, each one of the areas, there are total possible point associated with it. So if I'm looking at English Language Arts, there are maximum points that you can possibly earn, 16 points. As a district, we earn 16 points, meaning we earn 100% of the points on that one. And I'm looking at mathematics, total of 16 point assigned to it. We earn nine point, ratio of nine to 16, we earn 56.3% of the points. Every one of these percentages are just coming from these mathematical ratios. So you can just see overall, in the first standard, which is the academic subgroup, we earn overall cumulative of 58.9% of the point. We also have subgroup achievement standard, which they compare how much each one of our students made growth compared to the entire state of Missouri. Calculations are made. Are our students making better or worse growth compared to the state? Those are the different subgroups are all being counted in that. And in that one, also is academically, so you can see the same areas are being applied. So if I just point out, there are 56 point assigned to a standard one, which is academic achievement. 14 point assigned to a gain achievement, but subgroup achievements. Overall, there are 70 points assigned to it. What are the total number of points possible in our APR? It's 140 points, which you'll see on the bottom. I bring it to your attention that our college and career readiness, which is ACT, SAT, Compass, ASVAB, those are the tests that our students take, that's 10 point assigned to it. Advanced placement, international bac- bachelorate, dual critical TSA. It's not the airport thing, by the way, it's technical school. Thank you. Standard five dash six is a student placement. Those, each one of them, they have 10 points assigned to it. Overall, 30 points. Our attendance, 10 points. And graduation rate, huge 30 point assigned to it. You can focus and see how many points we earned in each one of those areas, consequently, the percentages associated with each one of those areas. Later, I will share with you some other slides that shows how we did this year compared to previous years and so forth. Overall, as a district, we earned 67.1, and that's a byproduct of the percentages that we earned in this last column. To continue on this one, I'll share with you, this is one big picture, putting all the numbers aside. Standard one, we earned 58.9. Standard two, subgroup, we earned 50% of the point. College and career readiness, 80. Attendance, 60% of the points. Graduation rate, 80% of the point, and overall, 67.1. Now I'm gonna start, give you three-year summary, rather than looking just how we did last year, so we can just see from one year to the next, how we're doing. The first standard that I just talked to you about, the top part, last year is the yellow, the year 2016, and my favorite color, pink. And 2015, gray. So we can see that what has been happening from year 2015 to 2017 in academic achievement. We can take a look and see what happened to our subgroup achievement. And college and career readiness, in our attendance, in our graduation rate, and overall. This bottom of the screen, even though we started having Missouri School Improvement Program, MSIP five in 2013, we decided, let's just convert the past, see how we did. If the standards were the same from year 2007, what percentage of points we would have earned. So you can start getting a perspective. Had we were evaluated based on MSIP five, we would have been earning 50% of the point. 2008, 64, 35, 50, and so forth. So you can just see the trends that we have had since year 2007, even though 2013 was the beginning of MSIP five. Next, I will go through, looking at, from 2016, I'm just summarizing everything together in academic area. In English Language Arts, what was our MAP Performance Index Point? In 2017, English Language Arts, what was our MAP Performance Index Point? And what was the rate of change from our MAP Performance Index Point combined as a district, all grades combined? We can look and see which areas we had dropped and which area we had improvement. Social studies was from 323 to 337. It's worth mentioning that we need to have a point of comparison, so we can look and see how state did in the same setting. Yes, we dropped, well, state dropped as well in English Language Arts. We dropped in math, also state had drops. Only area that state had improvement and we had dropped was in science. However, we had significantly more improvement in social studies compared to the state. Next, it's a different way I'm looking at the data that we have been looking, and I would urge Dr. Davis to help me out with this one. In this one, I'm just sharing with you, every school in our district. And how many in APR, Annual Performance Report, how many points we can possibly get? As I mentioned, there are total of 140 points, because in high school, we look at ACT score, we look at graduation rate. That doesn't apply to our middle schools and elementary school. Those are being held by a different number of points, which are 70 points possible. If I go and I look at in 2016, what happened? Well, in 2016, I'm listing in here, for example, if we are looking at any of our schools, how many points they earned? And consequently, the percentage points, which is a mathematical calculation of ratio of these two numbers. And we have labeled them with certain colors. And I'm showing you what happened in 2017. So again, we have two distinct columns. How many points each school earned in 2016? How many points each school earned in 2017? And the corresponding percentages. Then look at what were the differences in points and percentages. So we can go and see in some cases, if I'm looking at, for example, Cross Keys, they earned 58.6 2016, they earned 58.6 2017. So really, there was no rate of change. Anything that you see in these columns, either in percentage or points, if they are colored blue, that means the school made improvement in terms of percentage of points earning. If it isn't colored red, indicates that they, what did you do? It shows that they did not make as much improvement.
So let me chime in here. So the, so look at the two columns. Far left is the school. There's actually another column that's not there yet. I don't know if you can put it on the screen, Dr. Giudoli? But if you see Berkeley, Cross Keys, Ferguson, Airport, Bermuda, in the red, that's 2016 APRs. So those red scores there correspond to the 2016 APR in the red in that column where you have the cursor now. So if you look at that column where he has right now, that's 2016 APR. The red means that they were, that's the lowest level. Then yellow is the next level, then light green, then dark green, then blue. Certainly, we want all kids in, all schools in blue, I'm sorry, blue or green. If you look on the right side, the 2017 APR, you have fewer red schools. And we actually have more schools that grew. And so let's just look at a couple of them. For example, Berkeley, from 2016 to 2017, went from 35.7 to 42. Cross Keys remained the same. Ferguson Middle went up 55.7 to 68.6. Airport was huge. Airport went, that was our lowest performing school. Airport went from 20% performance to 68.6, and that's significant, you know, that's some growth, y'all. If you look at Bermuda, Bermuda made some really good gains. They went from 42.1% to 75.7. Central slipped a bit. Mr. Mack is looking at that, but they, you know, they're still in the green. Combs slipped a little bit as well, from 77 to 73.6. Commons Lane slipped a bit as well, 84 to 79. Cool Valley has some drops largely because of some of the ways that it's calculated. Del, you wanna say something about that?
Sure. Actually, you know, it's, here's the way that the state calculates the scores. However, Cool Valley, actually, their performance in ELA went up and in math. They did have a slight decrease in science. So what we can do right now is because science is a field test this year, our science scores are going to remain the same. It will be very hard for Cool Valley to even make adequate growth because science is where they need to continue to get their points. You know, we know that Suzette was, you know, actually in a different, you know, school last year. So Berkeley Middle went up, but their, Cool Valley is actually number three, if you will, in ELA in their performance. And they've had a steady increase in that performance level. So science had a big factor in the way that it's calculated and the significant, I guess, decrease.
So they went down, yeah, from 95 to 71. They're still in a safe zone in a sense, but, you know, you have to look at the details in terms of the reading in particular and the growth, because they're really way up there when it comes to the ELA. The way it's calculated here is how many percentage of points did you get? Duchesne was pretty flat at 65 still. Griffin went up a couple of points, was still in the red, but they went up from 57 to 59. Halls Ferry remained pretty flat. They're still in a pretty good place, but they're 88.6 last year and this year. Holman grew quite a bit largely because of science and the work on teachers over there. So 87.1, and they went up to 96.4, so that's pretty, that's pretty good growth there. Johnson-Wabash, I want to just take a moment on that. I was actually over there on Tuesday and talking with Principal Leggins. So they went from 42.9 to 45, and that doesn't seem like a lot, but they gained 12 points in ELA. Forget about hold harmless. They grew there. They grew that, in the points they made, just based on the work in the classroom. So, you know, I'm always constantly thinking about that sixty-seven, because it just kicked me in the, you know, the shin. But at the same time, I still wanna look at the covers, under the covers, to see what's there. And they are, I mean, yeah, there's some places that, Lord knows, we got a lot of work to do. But I think, yeah, they celebrate those small wins. And so they went up a little bit, not where they, you know, are in the safe zone yet. Lee Hamilton grew, sixty-six point four to seventy-nine. Parker Road went up seventy to seventy-four point three. Robinwood, some great gains, eighty-seven to ninety-five. Both slipped a bit, but they're still in a good place. Dr. Washington, they're working hard over there. But they're still at eighty-seven point nine. Look at Walnut Grove. Walnut Grove grew more than any when it turned, in terms of their performance. They went from twenty-two point nine to seventy-two point nine, that's huge. That's huge. And Weidwood grew as well, from seventy-eight to seventy-five. So, just wanted to show you this, as you look at the sixty-seven, also what's under that. If you look at the sixty-seven, because that's all I look at, is the big number, right? And, you know, most of that goes to the compliance pieces again, graduation rate, the attendance. You know, those pieces, college and career readiness, those are checkboxes. You know, are our kids here? Are they matriculated through high school in four years? Do we, do we know where they are? We're still working and on graduation stuff. So we're getting some good strong, particular place. But I'll say again, you know, had we gotten those six points, we would have gone up overall, non-academic. Now, I'm just talking about those compliance points. So I just wanted to say that publicly, because I think it's important. Because folks are working hard, they're working hard, and you know, it's, it's, it's hard to move something this big. But you have to keep, you know, pushing forward, especially when it comes to those really deep parts around reading and math.
And as Dr. Davis mentioned, when it comes to our annual performance report, our accreditation. They look at three years of data. In some cases, they look at seven years ago, what did we do? In terms of our checking students, who comes and who goes. So it's not just this year. We are being held accountable for many more past years in order to earn adequate number of points. And this concludes really the tie, the length, extent of information that I want to share with you. I'll be more happy to entertain any question you may have, and I'd sort of your questions.
Well, I'd like to have a rebuttal just a little bit, you know, I'm Mr. Negative down here.
Sure.
But, you know, let, I think, let me start with the positive. I think we're on the right path. But again, every district is graded the same way.
Sure.
Okay. I mean, you know, other districts are making it, okay?
Yeah, I'm not making any excuses.
I mean, and, and I know you don't have this available, Dr. Jidali. But you could send this in an email to me if you can remember this request.
Yes, sir.
I would like, I would like to follow. So it would be fifteen, it would be fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen. Third grade reading. And that would be fourth grade reading. Then that would be third, fourth, and fifth. Okay? I would like that compared to the same number compared to three years previous to that. If you could send that to me.
So look at.
And make it extremely, I'm pretty stupid here, make it extremely simple.
Yes, sir.
Just reading, whatever your reading thing is. You know, again, going backwards, seventeen, sixteen. So they would be fifth graders.
That is correct.
I don't, I don't want, you know, I just, for the whole district now.
Yes, sir.
Seventeen, sixteen. Sixteen, fifteen. And fifteen, fourteen. And then that compared to fourteen, thirteen. Thirteen, twelve, and twelve, eleven.
Yes, sir.
Just in reading. That's what I'd like to look at. You, I, I think I've said this many times. I think this is important, this presentation. At least for me. You know, these are numbers you guys deal with every day. And it gets a little, you know, I mean, for us to really comprehend this, we would almost have to have boy, I hate to say that word, but some sort of study session or something to really dive in deep. But you guys do that. So, I know you don't like this, but I've said it before, and I'll say it again. We are elected by a public who doesn't look through all this like you guys do. And, and they see that one number.
Yeah.
And they see that one number. So, so, you know, maybe we're being oversimplified, or at least I am, I'm trying to talk to the board. But, but that's the number we see. And I'd just like to, to, to see, you know, again, I think we're on the right path. But, you know, these things don't happen overnight. But I don't know the rest of the board members, but I mean, I was getting, you know, you know, it was, it was not a good number that was published. So I, you know, and that's who we hear from, and that's, we hear from the people that elect us, and that's, that's kinda what we're, we're based on. And I, I, I wanna say this too. I've been on this board six years. So I hold myself accountable. I really do. You know, I'm, I'm one of these, all, all about accountability, and the bug stops here too. So something, I, I'm thinking a lot, I'm going to the mountaintop and thinking, what can I do different? What, what, what can I, how can I support this district in a better way? Because apparently my first six years, I don't know, you know? And I'm up for reelection, and I'm saying that. But I'll tell you what. You know, I can't stress enough, everybody's working hard. But, but this is, this is serious stock here. I mean, this is, this is really, really serious, and I believe that you're taking it very serious. I really mean that from my heart. So, you know, I'm optimistic, but boy, do we need to see it. You know, we really do. So that's all I am.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just have a question in regards to science. Have we ever received a science reward?
So the last couple of years, we have not. And if you look at the NPI for science, it's about two ninety, maybe three hundred to get those there. I know Eric is here, and he's one of our science students, well, it's Tiffany. And so that's an area that we have not gotten points in, that we've been thinking pretty deeply about. Y'all wanna make comments there? Science?
So I would say that, so science, if last year was the first year, or is the last year that we will be able to recover points in science? Because of the field tests that will run over the next two years. And so our opportunity is to really focus around core instruction, which we are doing this year. Three, four, five, eight, and in biology, very intentional work with teachers around the new standards. We also have new standards in science, the field test overall this year. Eric's been working, he gave a little workshop today, literally, with teachers around core instruction. We are partnered with Wash U, working through our new standards with our science materials at elementary. So we still, we should start to see the benefits from that. But we won't see our points and note that value add for two years, because the test scores won't be counted. And that is just because Desi is doing a calibration over the field test over the next two years. It's just a function of the state where they're at with their assessment.
I guess another question I'm asking, I was looking at, while we were talking, I was looking at Hazelwood's scores in regards to science. Do we even, do we compare ourselves to our neighboring districts? I know we were looking at state, but are we comparing ourselves to neighboring districts who have some of the same kind of kids that we have? To kinda look to see, is there anything else that we need to do differently? Because they've received nine points in science, which is still not sixteen that's needed. But I just wanna know, is our curriculum a little different than what they're doing at Hazelwood? Or, like, just making sure that we're on the same track or?
And that's really across the board, you know, not just with science, but all areas. Is having good solid curriculum in place that's aligned to the standards? And teaching, teaching curriculum, you know, and standards, you know, instruction as opposed to interventions, right? And the focus has absolutely been there, especially when it comes to those core areas. You know, we have curriculum specialists who have been working deeply with teachers to make sure that we're being really consistent across the board. I may not give you a quick example, Holman. You know, Holman grew in the ways that they did this past year in science. I mean, look at that, they, they, they gained a hundred points. You know why? Because one, the teacher was teaching science every day, and she was teaching the standards deeply.
And she was proficient in advanced the previous year. And this year, it was close to almost like up into the seventy percent of her students were proficient or.
Proficient or advanced.
From eight percent, that, that's how much of it.
But that's just one school though, right?
She was very, absolutely, she was very intentional about teaching the standards, teaching science for an hour a day. Understanding what the students needed to know and be able to do. Incorporated writing, and you know, they were writing about the water cycle, if you will. So she was the teacher previous, you know, to Holman the previous year. But one of the things that she attributes the success to is her intentional planning and deliberating instruction based on standards. That wasn't a true focus before. That's how much of an increase she made in the year.
So my, my point though is, and so that is one, but you know, we have to have consistent practices across the board in our district, right? We, we have a bright spot, and, and we can use our own bright spot. We learn, and, and we are always having conversations with other districts and, and other, you know, you know, universities to deepen our own practice. But what's important is to have, you know, ELA teachers in middle school having good solid curriculum to teach on a daily basis, right? You know, math curriculum, especially Algebra One, where, where that's tested. In every area, we gotta have that consistency across the board. And so we have some bright spots, Eric may wanna say a word or two, but we have some bright spots where let's capitalize on our teachers right here that know how to do this work. And, and, and there are lots of pockets of excellence, but we gotta scale that to a high level. And we can do that, but you gotta have great people. Teachers spin their wheels, because they're trying to find things here, they wanna have resources there. And we gotta be consistent about having good solid curriculum, people who can support them in teaching that curriculum. Make sure they have the resources on a daily basis to teach good solid curriculum that's tightly aligned to the standards. I mean, that, there, there ain't no program you can buy that will intervene your way out of kids not having the skill sets. You gotta teach that, you gotta teach that consistently.
Just, and just, I was gonna add to that, if you notice the fifth grade science scores did go up this year. And so what we've been doing intentionally with elementary teachers right now is helping them build confidence in teaching science. And building up their skills in science, which then, our students then reap the benefits of that. And that moves to middle school and high school throughout that too, so. And that's who I was working with, is our elementary teachers this year.
And I will add to this, as you asked about science, how are we doing? What you see on the screen, are those number, the MAP performance index point for past three years? I bring your attention, two eighty-four, two seventy-nine, two eighty-nine. I did not compare different content areas, but if you go and look at the same grade level five, and you look at how we're doing in math. You will see we are doing far better in science than we were doing, for example, in math in our district. So, and we were so close, few more points in science, we would have been receiving a lot of points. Earlier I mentioned, they just don't look at one year, they look at three years span. And unfortunately, we were borderline to get points, and we did not get.
So I, I guess the last thing I'll say, this is kinda some of what Scott was talking about. So, so let me give you a quick hypothetical, right? Because I know you want the cohort data, I think it's really important, because it shows you, so here's Scott this year. Third grade, how's it doing, fourth grade, how's it doing, fifth grade, sixth grade, you can make a progression, right? I know that's critical. That's academic work that ha, that has to happen on a consistent basis. So let's just take for a moment academics and then compliance, right? So compliance is the graduation rate. Okay, and I won't get off this for nothing, okay? Because he said that one number. So Scott said a minute ago, that one number is where everybody looks at. I know we've had this conversation, I know quite a bit in our district, period. So let's just assume then, Scott, that we had gotten those six points in the graduation rate. Those six little points. Our EPL would have been seventy-one point four, which would have been an incline, and that's what people look at.
Right.
I, that's just graduation rate, that didn't even got anything to do with the other academic parts that I think is critically important. Let me go a little bit deeper with those six points. You're talking about, about sixteen or seventeen more kids that had we had on our graduation docket for the four-year graduation rate, we would have gotten that. We had two hundred and one kids, we didn't know where they were. And, you know, it was just there. And it was going back and digging deeper to figure out where they were, that our graduation rate has gone up some. I will constantly argue that I wish I could have gotten that two months back, because we could spend more of that time. But we don't, we shouldn't have this problem going forward, that's a compliance problem. Which, you know, that number builds or you rose confidence in your district from the community, I totally get that. But when you slice and dice it, those six points are non-compliance. It's not academic, right? And, and so I think it's really important that we all take personal responsibility for the work, right? That's, that's some important stuff, because I wonder if we go back further, could we still find some other, you know, places that we could have strengthened before now? So, you know, that's what it was.
Like I said before.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just.
I'm with you.
The only time I've seen this side of you in a different way is when I can get, really get you talking about kids.
Yeah.
So I love to see your passion here. And, and, and this is really eating at you.
Yeah.
And that's good.
You like it, huh?
Well, no, I'm just saying, the facts are, we didn't get it.
Yeah. Yeah.
The truth is.
And I take it personally.
I know what you're doing, and I love it. And I wanna say something that I think we gotta look at the bright side of this. Instead of just being mediocre, you know? This lit a fire under everybody, and, and, and you, man, more than a fire, it's like a furnace. And I, and I would put a thousand dollars down that says, that will never be missed again. As long as you're superintendent, even to the day you stop being superintendent. And, and I, I, I'm just saying, you know, we can take something good out of it. Because I, you know, it, it, it happened. And, and I have heard you say this so many times, so it, it is definitely an irritant to you. And I like that, I mean, that's, that's justified, that, that's how it should be. It's an irritant to me too.
Sure.
But the other thing, I don't know if you've heard this somewhere, but you were talking about the movement in the district and, and, you know, everything going on the right path. I've heard a lot of it stems on principals. Have you ever mentioned principal? So with that said.
They, they, they keep teachers to run them off.
You know, and, and with that said, and that's why I enjoyed the organizational health of last time we heard that. You know, I, I guess it's kinda like my analogies to sports. I, I don't mean you can't trade for a pitcher or something, but you can't change your whole, whole team in, in a year. And, and, and I'm really looking forward to, you know, with the, with the great gains we're making. Supporting the staff we have and going forward.
So I'm glad you said.
You know, I really, I really mean that positively.
I believe it.
I really.
But, but I wanna say that, you know, it just doesn't happen because you say it, right? Like, you gotta do the work. And, you know, sometimes things aren't popular when you, when you break things forward or wanna make decisions, and, you know, we're gonna have a conversation in a minute about block scheduling. I absolutely want people to be at the table. But we gotta have more time for kids to be engaging in content. Now, what that looks like, I'm open. So what I'm saying is that it's easy to say, there's work to do, you gotta do the work. My grandma used to say, if you don't work, you don't eat, right? You gotta do the work, and it's gonna take the work to make it happen.
Well, and I'll jump on that and just say, you know, when I was a little boy, my dad said, no decisions are wrong decisions. And I will say, you are making decisions, whether it's, you know, like, I'll, I'll, you know, with all the negativity, I'll be positive and say, where did I hear this? Not too many superintendents would, would take on redistricting. So, you know, I mean, you're, you're, you're jumping in the fire, so I'm in the fire with you, so.
Good deal, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Tonight I am going to share some of the work and planning procedures that we have been engaged in over the last couple of years. In an effort to possibly redesign our current high school schedule. So I wanna, oh, here's the clicker. Okay. Giving just a little bit of background about what
Okay, giving just a little bit of background about what a block schedule is. So a block schedule replaces a more traditional schedule of the six or seven forty to fifty minute daily periods with longer classes that meet fewer times each day in a week. Teachers are able to utilize more varied and innovative instructional techniques when class periods are longer. They can cover more content with fewer interruptions, provide students with more attention and one-on-one support, and they can engage students in more sustained, in-depth learning activities, including more sophisticated projects, teamwork, um, exercises and other activities that could not be possible in our traditional forty to fifty minute class period. So I'm not, without getting into the details, there's, when we're thinking about a block schedule, there's an A B schedule which students will take eight courses, about ninety minutes every day, um, for a year. So they're in four classes one day, possibly four classes the next. There is another model that is a four by four. Students are only responsible and they're taking four courses for ninety minutes a day for a semester. So they, they would still take eight courses a year, but they're only responsible for four classes at a time, okay? So I wanna go into, this is a, we have to think about, you know, I can appreciate and really want to recognize, there's some dissonance. When we talk about redesigning a schedule, that is a big deal and I think that we have to really respond to that. Um, and, and make sure that we're in partnership, it's something we're not doing to our stakeholders, but it's with them. So this is a quick two-minute video, really understanding the urgency or the why behind redesigning our current schedule. And do I just? I don't have my computer, I thought it was, I thought you were doing magic back there. This is America in nineteen hundred, this is a car in nineteen hundred, and a phone, and a high school. This is America in nineteen fifty, and a car, and a phone, and a high school. This is today, a car, a phone, a high school. Whoa, backup. So cars are now this, and phones are now this, but high schools are still that. American high schools are based on the same model and it's been over a hundred years.
Wow, that's a long time.
But why? In nineteen hundred, it made sense for high schools to prepare students for that. But in twenty seventeen, shouldn't they be preparing students for this, and this, and even this? So why are we still granting diplomas based on the time a student spends in a seat? Why are we still using the Carnegie Year, which was developed in nineteen oh six and says the formula for learning is, four years sitting at a desk multiplied by one subject taught at a time equals, students ready for the future? All questions, execute the super school project, ask America to help answer. There was a competition, not that kind of competition, this kind. The kind where communities across the country come together to rethink high school. So every student, everywhere, can be prepared for the future. And that's big, like really big, like the largest open call in history to redesign high school big. This is the hard work that went into it. Ten thousand people across the country became school builders and thanks to them, there will be brand new ways of teaching and learning. Starting with America's first super schools. Schools that will let students learn by doing, that focus on the future and spark curiosity. Schools that build community, unleash potential, and solve real world problems. Schools that will ask their students what they think, and will actually listen to them. Students.
So, um, I, I think I can help by moving this a, a little bit. So essentially, there are a couple of slides up here that talk about several committees that we created over the last two years and they're about block scheduling. Um, and if you could just fast forward down a little bit to, um, this committee. So we have the Community Engagement Committee, uh, the Education Committee, and looking at specific things within those committees. The Four-Year Plan Committee, and I'll stop there for a moment. So that committee in particular, looking at how kids are manipulating through high school. Uh, the next committee is the Investigation Committee and answering up lots of the questions that people have about what is block scheduling? And, uh, why block scheduling? And what is it that we need to be thinking about in for a floor? Now let me say this part, um, that really lends itself to the trip that we were gonna take, that we just postponed and, and, because I wanted to make sure the board members do it, the purpose behind that, okay? So there are a couple of, there, there are lots of kinds of schedules, right? There were two in particular that we've been looking at, two kinds of block schedules. Uh, one is four by four, uh, and one is eight, a period A B day. Uh, and so we're looking at those two models. Most of the schools in this region have the eight-period A B day block schedule. Uh, we called every single public high school, all of the block schedule models that we have found that are schools comparable to ours, comparable not with demographics, but size. Um, it, cause size is important, we talk about schedules. Uh, and they're, they're eight-period A B day, um, block scheduling models. And we're gonna take a look at those ones that are local. There were, there was only one or two in the area at, uh, smaller schools, I think Christian Brothers and maybe Lutheran, one of Lutheran schools. They had the four by four model, four by four, yeah, and, and eight-period A B day. At the end of the year, your child would have eight classes, they will have got eight credits. Each class will be one credit, okay, different than what it is now. Right now, kids get seven credits, they get point five each semester, uh, for, uh, seven classes, so they get seven credits a year. And the block scheduling model, at the end of the year, they get eight, uh, eight, eight, eight credits. Four by four is this, you take four classes in the fall, beginning in August and go all the way to December. And you take a final exam, et cetera, and then you'd be done with those four classes. You would take four different classes from January till May, pretty much like the college model is, you know, fall semester, spring semester. So that's how you get your, your eight classes for the year, that's why I call it four by four, four classes in the, in the fall and four classes in the spring. With the eight-period A B day, or the, yeah, eight-block A B day, you take on Monday, four classes. And then on Tuesday, you take four different classes. Then on Wednesday, you take those four classes again you had on Monday on the A day, so you have eight A B day, that's why they call it A B day, you'll switch back and forth. Uh, and so you'd have, you know, at the end of the year, still like four by four, you have eight classes or eight opportunities to get a credit for each one of those classes, okay? So there are pros and cons in both of them, uh, you know, and I can give you my opinions on both of them. I, uh, worked hard and was principal for our four, uh, you know, created eight-period A B day, you know, some research I did, we, most of the schools around here are A B day. And so what I want teachers to do and, uh, community members and anybody who, who volunteered for the trip was to take a look at both those models. Uh, we wanted them to see that, uh, a model we have traveled to, um, South, Park Hill South, uh, which is in the Kansas City area. They have a school, uh, about, a little bit larger than north, have about seventeen hundred kids there, uh, varying, uh, in demographics. But size-wise, it's very comparable to our, our high schools and they do the four by four model. Uh, Hickman High School is a, a pretty large school in Columbia Public Schools. So we have, we've actually visited, we drove there ourselves and visited those places just to take a look before we wanted to take a larger group so they can ask the questions. Teachers ask the questions, based on committee work we've been doing, Investigation Committee, Four-Year Plan, teachers talking about, you know, especially with teachers who have concerns about the arts and whether or not they, it would increase or decrease opportunities for chorus and band and, and orchestra and et cetera. So that they can ask the questions of people who are actually doing the work right now. And I said to teachers and I said to committees and I said it publicly, uh, that we would take it to a vote at the schools and you decide, I'm not deciding. Uh, I want you to decide, but I want you to have the information you need so that you can make a good decision, so that you can know why you chose four by four or, you know, eight-period A B day. I make no, um, make it no secret that I'm a proponent of four by four. And I will probably always be that, however, I want teachers to look at that, I want, um, you know, folks who are gonna be doing the work to look at that and see whether or not, and which one it works best for them. And, and, and so that was the purpose of, uh, having the trip, to be able to give them that opportunity. Uh, there's one other committee, I think, um, that's there, the Curriculum Committee, to look specifically at, uh, you know, what does it look like? For example, I remember having this conversation at MSB, cause I've met with all the high schools, uh, staffs about, uh, block scheduling. And one of the teachers at MSB asked the question, you know, I have a class right now that is just half a semester, uh, I'm sorry, half a year, one semester, and that's only point five credits, how would I do that on block scheduling? And there are in-laws opportunities for, um, curriculum writing and building because every class would be one credit. And it would be a semester long or a year long, depending on which model you would choose. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done and you can't just jump in it really quickly. Middle school's a little different because you have teams and you can work with them, we, all of our middle schools have some semblance of block, seventy minutes, eighty minutes, or whatever, what have you. High school's totally different. So I'll stop there and, uh, give opportunities for any questions about block scheduling and the models we've been, uh, been looking at.
Questions? I'm, I'm a big proponent of it, so whatever you come up with, I, I think it's great that you'd have a, you know, consensus. But, um, uh, you know, it'd be interesting, you know, how we always talk about that other, uh, elephant in the room, the discipline. I don't know how that would, uh, if at all, that would affect any of that, you know, me in the classroom longer and things like that. I know the A B, you get a break, you know, from a class and, and you come back to it a couple of days, but then you could, you know, I could see both sides. It's gonna be interesting to, do they have any data on comparing the two or do they just work? They both work or?
And we can give you miles of data.
No, I, I.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I totally know.
I guess they both work or they didn't have the two models?
So, so the secret, uh, i- is in the people and the work, right? The teachers in particular. And I think Laura raised a good point earlier when she was making her comments about PD. I was in a school that moved from when I was teaching, uh, actually I was an assistant principal at the time, this is back in the late nineties. That was a six-period traditional schedule like we are seven periods, that went to block scheduling. Uh, and it was, it took a couple of years, even after we started doing a different schedule, with the training that was needed, with the kind of work that it took to, uh, get folks acclimated into it. They've been in now for twenty years, so you'd be a hard person to try to change it at this point, cause change is always hard.
Right.
But when you look at the, uh, look at its face value, right? What we're after is a kid taking AP calculus in one of our classes compared to a kid at Park Hill South who's taking, uh, you know, AP classes, uh, AP calculus and a ninety-minute block. We give them fifty-five minutes of calculus, they give them ninety minutes. When they take the, uh, AP exam, who has more calculus? And so I think we put our kids at a disadvantage. Now that's the face value, but I know there's lots of work that has to be done. You can't expect teachers to jump into it and then not give them the support they need, I mean, it's a lot, I know it's a lot. Um, and, you know, when we have committee meetings, um, and we're gonna constantly have them, it, it's gonna take at least another year or, or to even get to the place that we wanna be at. But we gotta move that way, it's like a redistricting, you, you cannot do it, but you've just delayed the process, it's gotta happen, something has to happen differently, uh, so that kids have more time on task. So the process is always gonna be hard because it's change, um, and I absolutely acknowledge that. I think it's necessary, um, some form, um, so that we can give our students and teachers more time to deal with content and each other.
So moving forward, we would definitely like to take a team to visit an A B schedule in a four by four so that we can have an educated, you know, um, decision. Um, really present the block scheduling to the, the planning process to CAC in hopes of, really, again, I think it's very important that we follow the process and responding to, it is going to take, you know, with all of the different, um, tasks that the committees are charged with. Once, as a district, we decide on what model, that's when the true planning can occur. We have to know what model we're going to, um, implement, hopefully, in the, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Um, so that's not next year. But then, once we really decide on what model, that's when we can really get down, you know, to the details and planning for a successful implementation and transition. And I think it might help teachers a little bit with the, it's just the unknown, what, you know, we don't know A B model, four by four. Um, we do have monthly meetings, um, January, February, March, I, I think we put one in April. You know, um, our monthly meetings, um, that we have dedicated time to continue with the committee work and, you know, um, responding to, last year we had a plethora of, um, staff members that attended the meetings, this year, um, there has not been, um, I, I think, a great representation of our district staff. So we are encouraging others to come back to the committee meetings, responding to making sure that they're consistent and they know when the dates are, so responding to that, you know, piece of what can we do better to encourage more participation? So getting scheduled meetings and, and, um.
And I, and I, I personally take responsibility for that, being out of the timeout list and not being able to be engaged in those conversations, cause, you know, the one thing I try not to do is waste teachers' time, cause after school they're tired. Uh, and so, um, but what I did say when we had, um, a meeting a couple of weeks ago was, you know, at this point, you know, especially with high schools starting, high schools starting the pre-regretration process, you know, in a couple of weeks when we get back from the holiday, there's no way we would be able to do any of this implementation work, even in the next school year, it's gonna take us at least another year. But we need to make some really hard decisions in the second semester, the spring semester of this current year, about which direction, like, uh, trying to get some seed, that we're gonna go in so we can do that planning, uh, and can get ready another year out, uh, nineteen twenty, um, for, for implementation.
Nineteen twenty is what you're shooting for?
Yes, sir.
Um, are you, any ideas about doing it in the middle schools also or?
So they already are, uh, doing some form of block scheduling.
I'm good in middle schools. Kinda getting ready for.
An abbreviated version, they have about seventy-two, seventy-three minutes, so that was an increase, so yeah, that's.
Longer time.
Great idea.
Less transitions.
Yep, less transitions, that's okay. Which, you know, you mentioned discipline a minute ago, so if you look at the schedule itself, a lot of, if you look at the data, a lot of the conflict happens during transition time. Lunch, lunchtime is one, between classes, so let's just think about that for a moment, okay? And now if you have seven classes, you're changing classes six times, Eric, is that right? So, you know, uh, compare that to three times you're changing with four periods, you know? So that's less opportunity for the kind of, when we look at the data, when those, uh, occurrences are happening, you take almost half of that away. Not that that's gonna be a one-to-one relationship, but it certainly, uh, you know, encourages, uh, less transition, more time on task. More time instructional, more time with content, teachers and students.
That image of success, more time to have our students engaged in some of the, um, videos that, or some of the images that we saw in the video. That we have to have time and, you know, to be able to engage our students in that type of content.
Get here about that.
Academic stamina, we, we have to be an academic stamina in our students. If we're gonna prepare for college and universities, they have to be ready for that academic stamina they're gonna face, so.
That's your extreme. In that video about the, uh, the way schools look, you know, no change. I will say, you guys did an awesome job on that STEAM school, that didn't look like any school I ever attended.
Yeah, yeah. And I get, I got a question today, in fact, when I was, uh, with Sandy earlier this morning from a parent who was at the, uh, proceeding. Um, you know, all the time about, you know, uh, some of what you raise often is, you know, equity and, uh, is it happening at this school and that school? Um, and let me just say, you know, wherever I work, I, I'm gonna be passionate about this, cause I believe in public education. I, I believe in public education, cause I'm a product of it, right? And I believe in all kids getting, and I know change is hard, I acknowledge that all the time. But because it's hard, don't mean we don't do it, right? In fact, that's probably the reasons we need to engage in it, because it, obviously there's something that we haven't done yet that we need to be doing to make sure we're engaging all kids, not just black kids, white kids, all kids. Engaging in deep thinking, uh, because if we don't, our kids are already getting behind, they'll get even further behind. And this is hard work and, and I'm not in classrooms every day, not teaching, I'm in classrooms often, but I'm not in classrooms teaching like teachers are. And so I'm, I'm a teacher at heart, I'm always thinking about how does this impact teachers? Because I've had leaders, principals, who didn't know what they were doing. And, but I knew I had to keep doing my work for my kids in my class, cause they, they needed to learn math, right? And so I vowed myself that whenever I get into a role like I'm in now, I'm gonna be an advocate for people who did the work that I know I did in class. So, you know, my aim, our aim is never to push anybody away. I, I don't think I, I hopefully have never done that, that makes anybody feel like they aren't a part of a conversation. But, but we gotta engage in this stuff, y'all, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that, cause we have what it takes, this district alone. When I just look at the merits of Ferguson, Florissant, and the kind of investment this community puts in schools, you know, it's, it's a, it's a diamond in the rough, or if not a couple of diamonds, right? But you gotta do the work. Saying it is not enough, you gotta do the work. And I know it can be done, in fact, I know we're doing it, we got some of the most brilliant people that sit in this room right now, and I'm looking at their faces. And they are on the ground working hard, trying to make it happen for kids. And so it's gonna take more, you know, when it, when it gets, when it gets really tough, dig deeper. You have to, that's the only way you get out of it, and I know.
I'm not gonna preach this, but I'm telling you, it's, but I'm just, I'm serious. I'm not going to preach this, Sarah, but I'm telling you, but I'm just, I'm serious.
And, and I don't, you know, I'll say this, y'all, you know, you know, it's about people. I'm not about winning arguments. I'm about winning people because that's what gets us there. It's teachers and adults who do this work every day that will make the difference when it comes to our outcomes for kids. I mean, you know, no question, honestly, it's going to happen. But in the process, sometimes, you know, you can't get discouraged a little bit, but you keep going.
First.
Yes.
All right. What would be helpful though?
I'm sorry, Leslie.
What would be helpful though, Dr. Davis, is if we can get a sample for your plan so we can see the difference from what we're doing now and how much more that a student will be able to accomplish. So for right now, only thing I see is a one-credit difference every year. So just to see what that will really look at, look like for a student. That would be helpful for us to be able to make that decision.
Yeah, yeah. That's a, that's a good point you raised. Because over the course of four years, that's four additional classes. I know, I know. But I, okay, I'll just, we'll get it.
I do want to say something because I had block scheduling when Eric was in high school. Mr. Hadley should be on your committee if he's not.
Eric, exactly.
I'm volunteering you. She started college as the end of her sophomore year because of the extra that she got.
Yeah, I mean, we had block scheduling when I was...
So it, it does work. It is good. And that's why we need to do it. And I'm for the A B myself.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, we had it when I was in, so.
Yeah, so, so, you know, the only thing I would ask you to do though is if you wouldn't...
But see, that's what happened.
This committee work we're doing, especially with the four-year plan in particular, because that's a lot of the work the councils are doing with students. You know, I'd love to see that plan really be a five-year one, not a six-year one because I think we need to think about eighth grade. And really, we have those conversations there anyway. But it's eighth grade and then into that year beyond because that's accountability as well with the college and career readiness is where our kids are going to when they leave here and on to college. So just give it a little bit, but we're working on it diligently.
Jessica asked me a question and it's a, a good one that you need to be thinking about. She says, why did it stop if we had it? So whatever plan we put into place, we don't need to keep changing the system all the time. Tweaking, but don't always keep changing.
When was that? What year was that? Do you remember?
Eric graduated in ninety-eight and I was in ninety-seven.
Yeah. So I know I talked with some teachers at McClure in particular when I'm in the McClure staff. And I remember teachers telling me that they had block scheduling a time ago. And so I'm not sure why it stopped. But, you know, there are obviously some costs involved, the costs involved in everything, which is why we have to have these other conversations around redistricting and et cetera, et cetera. Because what we do is, again, however, should both said publicly that this is an opportunity for us to really maximize on our resources.
But I was on the board at that time and I do not remember us complaining about the cost, that we were concerned about the cost at that time. So I don't think that was a feature of why it was taken away. So.
I remember why. They were trying to make all the high schools the same. McClure-Nor had a hybrid model where they had an optional block versus traditional. So a student could take like a first hour, a second hour, and then a three, four block every other day. And then like a six, seven. And McClure had this other kind of half-block scheduling model. And so they all wanted them to go the same. And I think that's why they made that decision, even though they didn't actually go the same then. But, and also, our school wasn't really large enough at the time to really accommodate for that because there were so many people that were going to talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
She thought we said that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and I'll just say, since Erin was speaking, she helped me on something that came out at the meeting the other night on the fourth, when the committee was... We met with the community at MSB and there was a question about McClure-Nor having about eleven hundred students in the graduate class. And I didn't know this, and she helped me with this part, was that McClure-Nor didn't start out as a nine-twelve school, right? It started out differently. Was it a ten-twelve or eleven-twelve school?
I think it just started with ten and eleven and then built up from there, but it did not...
So if you had ten and then you had eleven, you would have a huge amount. So I didn't, so that's just some history I'm learning too that's really helpful as to why these things have changed. And then what do we, because what can we learn from it now? And think about how we use that information and that knowledge for future decisions.
Well, this was a junior high school and they didn't start until eighty-two, I think. They put the, the freshman that graduated, that came from this school, went as sophomores to McClure and then the freshmen started going in eighty-two to McClure. So I, if you look at that, that was, that happened too. There's lots of history. I like history.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year calendar. Boyd?
Do you need me again? We have for your review the first draft of the proposed calendar for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. The calendar committee's been meeting for approximately the last two months. Made some changes to some of the days, except that we have kept the number of student days and teacher days as we did have this past year. We've kept the I L T model again where we have students out of school while we go to our I L T days. That was in response to a need to make sure that we had enough coverage, sub-coverage throughout the year for other needs in almost big PD days. As we found two years ago, it was just causing such an issue in terms of the operation of the schools and the cost of the subs. We've also kept with the full two weeks out of winter break. And we end school on the twenty-fourth as our last day of school. Any questions on the first draft?
So I'm looking at it. Let's go with January thirtieth. So is there school that day? The color looks like it's professional development day.
It's a, it's a half-day. So one of the other changes right now proposed in this calendar is that we have, we have removed at this point the early release days that typically happen every Friday. We've also cut down the number of half-days for professional development and instead try to strategically place the half-days throughout the year so that we don't have as many out-of-school days or out-of-school hours for students. So when you see a slash, that represents a half-day.
So are you saying you're increasing the number of half-days or decreasing it?
We decrease the number of half-days.
Okay.
So if you remember those E-days that we have right now, that was secondary. And so what we have is half-days for elementary. And then we have E-days that on Fridays for secondary, that is currently like three a month, right? Which is where some of the complaints we, and you have been getting about kids being out of school and et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we still have, as Dr. Boyd said, the I L T days already built in. That just changed this current year because we're having so many problems with substitute teachers, right? So now when we have I L T, then our students are out, so there's no issue with subs. So that teachers can, and the whole I L T can fully engage in that learning opportunity. However, elementary, you know, had been really appreciating having that half-day time. And so we wanted to add in some half-days still throughout for everybody. So the half-day won't just be for elementary, it'll be for secondary as well, it'll be for everybody. But this is, the difference is, and this again is just, you know, a proposal now, but... So the I L T day, you'd have parallel PD in the morning where the I L T group and the non-I L T will be getting the same PD in the morning. And then the afternoons, they would be doing the P L C work. That P L C work was traditionally and currently what elementary does on the half-day. So we have I L T work in the morning and then P L C work in the afternoon. The half-days that are laced throughout this proposed calendar would be largely for the culture and climate work. And that is D B I S, O C I three-T work, organizational health work, so that we can really focus on the culture and climate pieces. And so we still have all that in there built in. And, you know, it, I mean, I wish we could have more days for teachers to have some time just not to be bothered because I know they need that, you know? But every day costs, so we have to try to be strategic if we can.
Just going to have to communicate with parents these half-days in the middle of the week.
Have you had complaints from parents about the half-days? Is it difficult for them with childcare, things like that?
We definitely, Dr. Dix has spoken more to this. There have been concerns about both the half-days and the early release days. So the current calendar as, as presented is sort of a compromise on that to cut down on those number of days.
Most of the complaints I've gotten and get are the Fridays and consistently, especially at secondary. And, you know, particularly for parents whose, you know, students are first year in a secondary school and then they're turning around saying, well, they're out of school all the time. And then at the high school level as well. Not as many complaints from what I, you know, if I had to sort of chart out for the half-days with elementary as it is with the early release days at the secondary level. So I, I think though, I think you made a good point that, you know, you know, whatever the end calendar looks like, those half-days would be everybody and then communicating that so everybody knows well in advance. And it's not these every Fridays, but in fact, elementary and secondary would have the half-day. You know, and it's about six, I think, if I'm not mistaken, laced throughout the year.
And then again, we're not going to have snow days again. So what the plan is that we'll be zero snow days?
Right now, what we did is we proposed snow days kind of spread throughout the year. They're December twenty-first, May twenty-fifth, May twenty-ninth, May thirtieth, May thirty-first, and April twenty-second.
Any other questions regarding the calendar? So I guess you'll bring it back to us next month is what the plan will be or?
Yes.
Uh-uh. No.
No? Okay.
Part of negotiations. Remember it comes with the package?
Okay. Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Cause you're up. Organizational health.
Thank you.
Phase two.
For information and consideration as opposed to action for a mate, we are recommending that the board approve phase two funding for the organizational health development process. During the last three decades, the organizational health diagnostic development corporation has repeatedly consistently found a strong relationship between organizational health and productivity. The data clearly showed that keeping an organization healthy is going to enhance its potential to become more productive. Phase two will include strategy sessions that will operationalize the data obtained through the O H I survey. Additionally, examines the relationship between organizational health and student performance. As we move into phase two, the focus will be on looking at the best leadership practices. We're going to help leaders align their systems to ensure that quality is maintained, provide leaders a database of strengths and opportunities for growth. And the leaders will develop access steps as provided through longitudinal feedback. Additionally, there's going to be a couple of different opportunities in phase two for principals to get together, not only with the consultants and the areas of the super spoke with their leadership teams to talk about the strategies. So it's not just going to be a decision principals make. They'll be making it within the context of the distributed leadership model. The other thing to realize is that we can see or we have, you've had the opportunity to be presented with data that can show how the impact of a healthy school community can really impact what's going on in terms of the classroom. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that we are building the capacity of our strong leaders to, to enhance the practice of teachers and therefore enhance the student achievement. So when we look at costs, as was discussed in the prior work session, phase two costs will be at approximately seventy-four thousand dollars. That will include twenty-four days of professional learning, our two O H I consultants, the development of principals and teacher leaders, integrations of current systems. So we're not just adding new things, but we're actually making things work together. And onsite coaching and intervention using research-based practices, concepts and, and leadership experience.
All right. So we have twenty-four consultant days that are planned. Now, from the presentation that you gave us a couple of weeks ago, with these twenty-four days, are they targeting those high-need schools only? Or are they going after everybody wants to get?
The, the twenty-four days, which would include two different onsite events. One would be a resource conference with schools and the other one is a strategy and operationalizing of the data workshop that would occur a couple of months after that. That includes all schools and all leaders.
What's the gentleman's name that gave the presentation? Marvin?
Marvin.
Marvin, that he talked about that if he was able to come in and go to phase two, that he about assured us that we'll see growth in, in the health in those particular schools. So is this going to satisfy that need where those schools or leaders that need that additional push and help are going to get it since it's going to be everybody together?
I believe so, yes. And actually, one of the other consultants Leon is here as well if he can answer the question.
Thank you. I've been pleased to hear you talk about organizational health all night long. You talked about your five MSET compliance endpoints, everything that you talked about with that relates to organizational health. We've made available to you since the last meeting also data based on your attendance for students and also for teachers. That indicates that this is not really a cost proposal, but an investor proposal. Showing that the, I don't know if you have, if you have it as board members or not, but we have provided the data that shows exactly what teachers have taken days for, what the cost for that was, and indicated that by just trimming the average teacher H and T rate from seven days to six days would save the district ninety-three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. For student attendance, which I suggest to you is high-grade graduation rates. You receive thirty points for, up to thirty points for on your MSET. If the graph that we showed you indicated the top third, middle third, bottom third is for attendance, ranging from eighty-seven percent attendance to eighty-four percent attendance. And if you simply raise the middle third and bottom third up to the same percentage as the top third, and by the way, that's not a high percentage, it would save you over seventy-two thousand dollars for that purpose. I certainly, well, just a little bit of, may, just a little bit of personal feedback to you. I've worked at this since two thousand and three in ten states, fifty districts, hundreds of principals, and thousands of teachers. I can show you schools that have block schedules and have high health and high student achievement. So you schools that have block schedules and have low health and low student achievement. Block schedule certainly has great data for time-on-task increase. But if you do not increase the clarity and commitment to student achievement goals of teachers and increase their ability to adapt and change to meet those goals, it doesn't matter much what you have for schedule. Your primary focus in the district is adaptation. Yes, you've got a lot of folks who are working hard. You have islands of excellence. Data is very clear about that. There's a critical need for systems, structures to be put in place that you don't have just islands of excellence, but can truly have an excellent school district. So it's not just about working harder, but also working smarter. So I suggest to you that this process, the next step in this, the resource team conference is a two-and-a-half-hour conference with supervisor, each principal, myself. One part of that is to provide for each principal insights, not only into their data, but also how to report that data back to teachers. Teachers are the ones who gave this data. They're the ones who need to report back what the report shows, not only for their school, but also for the district. And then also the bulk of that conference time with principal and supervisor is developing strategies that will help move that school. And in most cases, it will be focused on that dimension of adaptation. It's about changing to meet external expectations, being able to do it, being willing to do it. The first strategy, dealing with... The first strategy dealing with that in most cases will be goal focus, you've got a bulk of schools, as you saw in the, in the scatter plot two weeks ago, where teachers have said, we're at the unclear level about what our goals are, that can be changed quickly. But our frustration, my frustration is, is that we are three months behind what we proposed initially, we should have already had these conferences and given principals the insight, the tools to begin making these adaptations, you know, so to delay this further is really just shortening that time for principals to work effectively with their teachers to make this happen. And that is a, for me personally, because I've seen it work, I know it works, I've been a customer of this process, I've taught the process, I know it works, so I encourage you, consider strongly what the recommendation is and move forward, thank you.
So, it'll be you and Marvin coming in to do the coursework?
Uh, I'll be the one that will be the lead consultant, uh, I will do the conferences with every principal and every supervisor, uh, in these, in these sessions, uh, it's a two-and-a-half hour time period, uh, so it takes about nine days for that to happen. It is intense work, it's very specific work, uh, Marvin will come when he is needed, uh, but I am your primary consultant, uh, when time comes with a team training, uh, we ask principals to identify six key teacher leaders, in secondary schools, that's their department chairs, elementary schools, that's typically their grade level chairs, to come for intense two-day team training. They spend a lot of time working on their data, they're also able to, to, to hear from other schools, there'll be twelve, uh, schools in each of these trainings, principal and six teachers each, they'll have opportunity to hear what other schools are doing, you're working on adaptation, what are you doing, how are you increasing goal focus, uh, yeah, you've got some, certainly, uh, teachers and principals who are doing some fantastic things, best practices that need to be identified need to be shared, and this is one way that can happen, but I'll, I'll be your lead consultant, uh, if I need to bring in, in, in terms of time, other consultants will do that, if Marvin needs to come in, he'll be available to do that, but I'll be your lead consultant.
Questions?
I have a question for Dr. Davis, um, are there other institutions or other places that we can send some of our, all the leaders to, to learn this so they can come back and teach it year after year and work year after year instead of putting it all, seventy-five thousand dollars into this, couldn't we put the seventy-five dollars into our own people and have our own education?
Yes, so they're the experts on it, and we could go and look at it like Dallas ISB, for example, and I know, I, we've done some look at their work that they've been doing in other areas as well, but, you know, you're talking about training our people to be able to pray themselves and keep it here, so that training would do exactly that, is invest in our people so they would get the training intensely here, uh, you know, I read, um, you know, through leadership effectiveness, I looked at organizational health, uh, and I fully get it as a principle, and I'm thinking about this from a principal's perspective, but our folks, nor me, is the expert on the strategies that improves goal focus in a school, it's one thing to talk about it, and I get, we could do some PBIS work, and we're doing that work, and there's some structures that need to be put in place around, uh, in, in fact, we're doing some CI three T work that's gonna give us some data from the individual student, we're talking about the culture of the school, and then what principals do differently, that guys, their work is impacting teacher, both of them and their behavior, so I think it's, you know, investing in our people here, to me, it's a stronger, more thoughtful in, uh, investment.
May I?
I just got confused.
May, may I respond to that?
I, I, I need to have him clarify to me what he just said.
That, I, I, I prefer us put that money into our people here than sending them somewhere else to get training from schools that've done it themselves, I guess is what you're asking, you're asking if they could, if our people can go to other schools who are doing this work?
No, 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 I'm asking, is, like, you guys went to Harvard?
Right.
And brought back something, is there somewhere that they can go and bring back this culture change and, and make it so that year after year, we've got these leaders that we are building in and investing in that can continue so that every year we don't have an expense if we need to do that, that, that we've got an ongoing thing that's ours.
Right.
So I guess, is this something that you're gonna come back to every single year and grab a new batch of teachers?
Our, our purpose is not for you to be dependent on us, we have time built in specifically working with your supervisors, those are the people that we want to invest our time in for the future, so, so there's, they ought to be the ones who are leading these conferences, data conferences, they're the ones, or other district folks and staff development doing the team training, but they can't learn that overnight, uh, but there's time built in for significant training, uh, with your, primarily your supervisors, and they're the ones as leaders or principals, uh, in our experience, who are the ones that we should invest time in, we do invest time in, and they are the leaders of leaders in the district.
So, one of my concerns is that within the district, the, the people who have the greatest movement regards to leaving for other positions are really our principals and assistant principals, so if you're investing a lot of time into training them and then, you know, they turn in their resignation, they're gone in June, do we still have that foundation and that building to continue the work?
Well, one, one of the key elements is this team training where you're investing in building the leadership capacity of key teachers in that school, I suggested you also that the, that the rate of, of, uh, principals leaving is highly related to the culture of the school.
Maybe we could get some, uh, some of this help on how to keep people here, seriously, keep our good, good people here, you know, um, I was the biggest detractor of this at the very beginning, but, uh, I'm kinda bought in, I'm kinda watch the process, and I just challenged the board that for seventy-five thousand dollars, not that that is a sum of money, but if the needle moves, you know?
Well, we would highly recommend.
I mean, if, if the needle moves, and I'll just say this, I am a big proponent of a third party, um, you know, um, I don't mean that, um, oh, how can you put, you know, it's kinda like a marriage counselor, right? It's taking the game, I mean, they're just kinda watching in, and not taking sides with either one, but, uh, I, I was, I, I would be a proponent of, uh, a third party, definitely, and, and his data was, uh, you know, was compelling, now, does it move the needle? I guess that's what time will tell, but I'd go as far as to say, if it truly moves the needle, I'd get it every year.
I think it would be useful to hear from, uh, Dr. Adrian Bland, uh, she's been a really integral part of phase one, um, since she oversees principals, and she's been part of the first, uh, level of conferences that have occurred, and I think she could provide some insight as to how, as a supervisor of principals, uh, it has impacted how they have looked at professional development plans and strategies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to first say, when we met as a team, Marvin, myself, and principals, what was interesting to me was how the data was so very accurate, um, many times when you're measuring leadership or you're measuring, um, climate, you look at, it's, it's, many times it can be subjective, um, and they brought in, um, some objective data that was quantitative and very accurate, um, and so what I could have said, how I felt about a building, they shared through very clear and accurate data through numbers, um, and it was, I was amazed at some of the, uh, leadership traits that came out of the reports from the surveys that were completed, so much so that principals were very reflective on who they were as leaders and how they connected to certain groups of teachers in their buildings, and if those were the right teachers or teacher leaders in their buildings to, to connect with, to move the needle on achievement, so it was very accurate, um, so very excited about the next steps, um, especially the part where he talked about in phase two, they would be also working with teacher teams, so it's not just about developing leadership capacity in our principals, but also developing those traits in our teacher who we hope would potentially move into, uh, leadership roles, and that's not always principals, but the principals need, we know that leadership is about good principles, quality principles, and I, I really believe that this data is going to help us move that needle, it's the first time I've ever had a survey that was so accurate and quantitative, um, for leaders, so just wanted to, to share that piece with you.
Quick question, um, was the comparative analysis done with the OHI survey and the survey done by the NEA?
That'd be interesting.
No, but we're looking at trying to do that this year, we've actually been speaking with, uh, NEA leadership around being able to utilize, uh, the FNEA survey in, in a much more active way, uh, that hasn't always been the case, so we intend to use data from both to try to help kind of formulate next steps per building.
Once we do that, I would like to see, cause to me, we spent money, well, FNA, FNEA survey was free, and they did the same survey, and I mean, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the, it was some, maybe some biases, but still, it was the same people for certain.
It was the same people, the information we, we see from, um, OHI, the, first, they gave recommendations, so there was some clear recommendations, action steps, leadership rules for principals to implement immediately, um, and it really went deeper into how principals were connecting with certain groups of teachers in their buildings, um, if their focus was on goals, so it really looked at what are those key, um, areas for leadership that will move a building, and then how is our principal, how are our principals aligning to those research-based, um, moves for buildings, so I think those, that's the differences, it really talked about more of a solution-driven, um, feedback than, I think NEA definitely gave us valuable information, I think the, the biggest difference here was, we had some solutions behind, um, some of the information that was provided. And then I think the other piece is following up and going back into the buildings and supporting those principals, because we, we have, I feel, with our principals, we have, um, done a lot of investment in content and developing content in our principals, um, the next piece is definitely developing those leadership traits, um, in quality principals, because if you have those leadership traits, then you can then go out and develop teachers who then will reach students, so that's the piece that I'm looking forward to if you guys consider and or approve.
So that follow-up element of it, that's gonna be done in-house, is what the plan will be?
And we talked about then targeting those tier in the schools and targeting the schools that needed the most support, um, and then kind of tearing it out with our support based on the needs of the schools.
I have to be honest, all, I'm skeptical, is because in the, so, seven years I've been on the board, I've had so many times people come to that podium and say, we need this speaker, we need this program, we need, this, this is it, this, we're gonna see improvement, and time and time again, you know, it's just like, oh, okay, you know, and, and that's why I am so skeptical about it, is that, you know, I'm willing to make the investment if we can really honestly see a return on that investment, and, and just not another thing, it's, oh, we're trying.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, but we, we'll be willing to share data from, in fact, we sent, uh, I finished a, and published a white paper just earlier this week about La Jolla School District, which has ninety-nine percent minority students, ninety-five percent economic disadvantage, forty-eight percent ELL, school in Texas, we've worked with them since two thousand and ten, and based on data in two thousand and fifteen in Texas, they have exceeded academically all of the Texas expectations, in terms of their goal focus, when you, when I show the graph for that district, composite graph for all teachers in that district, all schools in that district, if you recall the six steps of goal focus, there was only one school out of thirty-three that was below support, all above, none were unclear about goals, all had clarity, all had acceptance of goals, as well as longitudinal work with the district, I show you districts we've had thirty-year experience with, that all we provide for them is data, because we have developed their people, they do all the rest of it, so I'll provide whatever data you want.
So can I just give you an example of just how this goes deeper, um, I have a building where teachers who many times are not as comfortable, some, some teachers would sharing their concerns about their principal, um, and so some of the principal, the teachers were courageous enough to share with me, we feel like our principal, um, has ignored us and is valuing new, newer teachers and not really hearing our voice, so talk to the principal about that, um, of course, teachers just concerned about going to the principal, after our session with, um, OHI, just from the data, um, talked about goal focus, and so we, it tiered out the groups of teachers, um, and so it showed where the chief, the principals had connected with a group of teachers, but these teachers were not the goal-focused teachers, so in our conference, he shared, you know, you are definitely connected with a group of teachers up here, but these aren't your teachers you need to be connecting with, you need to be connecting with this group down here who you have disconnected yourself with, because these teachers down here, they know what to do, they have proven themselves to move achievement, but for some reason, you haven't connected with them, so that came out of the data from teachers responding to the survey, the exact same conversation that teachers had shared with me who was not as comfortable with delivering that information about their principal, so that's just to give you an idea of how the data that, the research-based data that, uh, we received from the surveys, how tightly correlated it was to the climate of that building, so the first one I then met, and from this conversation set a goal for herself to begin to work very strategically with those teachers that she had disconnected with, so she hired a group of new teachers, connected very closely to those teachers, but not her more seasoned teachers, so, but now she's working very strategically on how to bring all those teachers on board, so just give you an example of how the data, um, tightly aligned to what was occurring in a building, and that's just one example.
Rob, I, I agree with you about the past, but, you know, like I told Dr. Davis, I really challenged the board here on if, if we go this direction, we have to stick with it, you know, sometimes we're guilty of trying the new thing too, or allowing the new thing, and I think we've gotta get pretty clear on what the direction of this place is gonna be, as, who, was it, Courtney said, four-year plan or whatever, I don't mean we can't tweak some things, but if we're gonna do this, we need to see it through, I'm not a hundred percent bought into it per se, I'd like to, you know, we'll have to see if the needle moves, but, um, I, I think our, our problem is we're always putting a different picture in, you know, so we're sticking with it, trying to stick and improve and, and go with it, I don't, you know, I don't know, it's just some thoughts, but, uh, what, what timeframe? You mentioned five years, uh, I'd like to definitely see something in at least two years that would leave me confident to go on to five years. But, but if this is the professional development, I mean, the basic professional development tool for leadership, you know, we either need to decide on something else or, or, or stick with it in my mind, but there'll be accountability factors here, right, accountability to the superintendent, accountability to, uh, this gentleman, OHI, and his firm, and really accountability to us, I'll say this, if it doesn't work, we'll know what doesn't work, but, you know... But, you know, I agree with you, we're jumping around all the time. I think it's time to just stick with something. And if this is the something that our leadership leaves, then I don't know, I mean, I-
I know so for me-
What's your thoughts?
I know for me, so what would be helpful in this process, if we do decide to go this route? What measurements and, in between, so we can start seeing some real outcomes? So we need to know whatever the goals are going to be, and then for us, we can hold them accountable. You talk about accountability, but it's easier said than done. We don't know what we're being, holding them accountable for. So whatever the goal is going to be, we need to be able to see that, okay, that you're working with this particular principal, okay, so we need to see this change in the next three months, or this needs to be happening in the next six months. So whatever that plan is, we need to share that before we can ever make a decision.
And I, I, you know, I agree with you. As I said before, when you're measuring leadership, many times it's based on a lot of subjectivity. And I think this helps us give hard data on specifically leadership, and what is occurring with those leaders in that building to move achievement. Because what we have, for the most part, is achievement, which should definitely be a measurement for the effectiveness of a leader. But also, sometimes we have to see what's going on in between to get to that high achievement. And that's what, Keith, I think this will help us with leaders, is helping develop along the way.
And, and also being nuanced in leadership behavior, because you mentioned FNEA and the survey they do. And, so they surveyed the members. This survey does everybody.
Right.
And looks at everybody in the school. And then, you know, you know, when I, for example, when Lori presents the data from the past around what members are feeling, you know, I want to go in and change it right away. But sometimes I say to myself, I don't know how. But, you know, I, I, sometimes I just don't know how, right? And I think it's important to have some science and some, you know, you won't need me diagnosing anybody, because I don't have that expertise, right? I can help you, you know, get along better with your friends, but I can't, I can't diagnose that, because I don't have it, right? But I think it's, it's important that we have some tools in place, some research-based tools, that can help leaders, not just principals, but leaders in schools, change behavior, their leadership behavior, which ultimately will improve culture. So it's like, we, we, we're, you know, I hear, you know, culture's bad, and I feel responsible. But then I say, what do I do? You know, and so you try a lot of things, you meet and all that stuff, but you, I need to do some other things, but I probably know what I'm looking for. So I just wanted to say that.
So my question is, we have had a lot of talks, but nothing has been finalized about possibly reorganizing our grade levels for potentially the, from my understanding, the upcoming school year? So we're about to, this seems like an awkward time to invest in principals and specific groups of teachers when we might be, that might not even be the principal of that building next year. Does that make sense?
Well, so the reorganization-
You know what I mean? The reorganizing of the grade level. So like, for example, if the principal from one school, if your data shows us that the third and fifth grade teachers, you know, whatever, they maybe weren't working well together, well, maybe that doesn't even matter, because she's about to be the principal of the new pre-K through second grade building. I mean, I don't, I guess maybe I'm not understanding.
So how do you overcome that?
Well, first of all, the data that we have seen, you know, from your schools, what Dr. Bland was talking about is called a thirds line graph, where we take every teacher's responses to the survey, and rank order them, highest response and lowest response, and divide by three. So you have a top third, middle third, bottom third. And then within each of those thirds, we identify how they responded to the questions on each of these dimensions. So we see within each of these thirds, where are they with goal focus? Where are they with adaptation and cohesiveness and so forth, okay? A definite pattern that we, that we discovered was that that top third of teachers, the ones who responded most positively, and when they responded to the survey, they had a choice. Strongly agree, agree, undecided, disagree, strongly disagree. They're responding to items of the survey, saying that this is or is not on our campus at these levels, okay? That top third was a pattern in many of your schools. Those teachers in the top third, now first of all, who would you expect on a school campus to have responded most positively? Who would you expect? It better be your teacher leaders. And what we found was that very typically, they had the lowest level of goal focus, okay? Now, they had higher responses, but their priorities were very different than the bottom third. Frequently, that top third, for the dimension of power, had relatively high power. The bottom third had low power. May very well be the bottom third was saying, "Principal, you've empowered the wrong people. You've empowered those who don't have a student focus." And so what it comes down to then, how did that principal select people for leadership? Did they volunteer? Well, who does a volunteer represent? Whose agenda? Their own. Were they elected? If they're elected, who do they represent? The cohort that voted for them. Or are they appointed by a principal, who makes it very clear, "These positions for leadership are available to anybody on this campus, but here are the criteria for appointment. If you want to be a leader, from, appointed, then here's what I've got to see," okay? So if that principal moves from a school where you've had a top third up here, okay, with low goal focus, but they've learned the criteria for appointing teacher leaders, a fresh start in a new school, would look very different. But if they don't have that, what are they going to do? Same thing. Well, it's your turn this year, you be department chair. And how far do they get rotated? Always saying in some schools, being a department chair is like the Supreme Court. You're there for life. That's not appropriate leadership. Right, so it's very critical, how does this principal identify who is going to be appointed as leaders? And how is that communicated to all teachers, so they have the opportunity for appropriate influence? And many of your schools, I suggest to you, you've got some potential teacher leaders in the bottom third of the faculty who, who feel disenfranchised. You look at the dimension of communication, in many cases. And there's another line graph. As teachers are taking this survey, the principal has taken the same survey. But the principal is responding in terms of, how do I think my teachers are responding? The principal's trying to predict what the teacher response will be. That comes back in the line graph. In most cases, your principal's line graph is up here, your teachers are down here. And the reason why the principal is up here is primarily, in most cases, because the principal is communicating only with that top third, who are in leadership positions. And so therefore, the, the scattered, and then we overlay with that thirds line graph, the principal's line graph very clearly shows who's got the ear of the principal. And if those teachers have the ear of the principal, are those the lowest goal focus, who are the most unwilling to change. You're going to wind up with a district pattern of low goal focus and low adaptation, which is exactly what you got.
Didn't we say that it will take two years or more for us to reorganize anything anyway, right?
Well, you know, the whole plan, it, it'd take longer, but you know, so there would be some, you know, depending on how things come out when it comes to the community meetings and decisions the board makes to directly on, so.
And then you was, we were saying, you would say five years, and then we say we can change it, two years, is that right?
You'll make that decision every time you approve a budget.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll come back to you and show you year by year. You'll, you'll have, you'll have, this year you had a bar graph with single bars. Next time you come back with for every dimension, two bars, last year, this year. As you progress, we'll show you a bar graph for every dimension, every year. So you'll have the opportunity to see, are we moving the needle? And to say yes or no to funding it. All I ask is that you do it with fidelity, okay? In other words, like, like this year, for example, I, I know the problems with this year, I understand that. But to give, but to give principals a resource team conference, where the strategies are developed in January, February, and then resurvey in April, that's not fair to principals. And I love time.
All right, so, um, I will vote for this. Okay, I'm going to throw it out there. You know, I'm, I'm going to take that leap of faith. You know, especially with Scott saying that, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to do it. And, you know, next year if you come forward, you know, I want to see improvements. I want to see, and you talk a lot about systems in place. You know, this is what you feel will put that system in place. And Dr. Bland, I trust you a great deal, and you standing up there talking, it, it means a lot to me. I'm, I'm putting you in the spotlight on this one, so. So, you know, I, I'll vote for it, so, I, I'm okay. Do you guys, all right?
Can I just say?
Yes.
Can I just say, I will say that leadership is very complicated, and much more complicated than, even in this role, I realize how much more complicated it is than when I started out as a principal. And if I had this kind of support as a principal, I always thought I was a pretty good principal. I, I know I would have been a rock star superprincipal. To have this kind of support on how to have somebody diagnose me as a leader, and how I'm impacting kids, and giving me strategies along the way, research-based strategies, and following up with me, is powerful. And I just think sometimes we just assume we place people in these critical roles to not just move kids, but to move teachers. And, and our district, we've talked about our APRs in a certain place. Dr. Davis talked about, you know, when things get tough, we have to keep pushing and moving. To be a leader in a building and to make that happen for kids, you have to have some practices, some research-based practices and supports to make that happen for kids. And I believe that this will give us those strategies and practices across the district to support schools. So I just want to share that piece.
And I agree with Rob. When Dr. Bland puts, does anything, and she's part of anything, I think we should support, because she is very good at what she does. Wow. All right, so we're going to do, um, go ahead, and if somebody wants to make a motion to approve, we'll accept it? We can. I mean, we, I mean, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, unless you feel you're still quite hesitant, but.
I'm not hesitant.
I make the motion that we approve-
Because I'm not hesitant, I'm voting, so it's fine.
Okay, all right. So what was that called? I make the motion that we approve the proposed budget for Phase Two, the organizational health process.
Second. Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we have two opposed, so four in favor, and, um-
You do roll call.
No, you do roll call, I'm not that confused.
Okay, we'll do call for the roll call. Okay, Scott Eber.
Aye.
Mrs. Ponder.
Nay.
Mrs. Hall kid.
Nay.
Assistant Secretary votes aye. Yes. Okay. I'm not even looking at me like I'm Dr. Graves.
Aye.
And Mr. Chabot.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Kevin.
Good evening, Board, or is it morning? I told somebody to cut this down for forty-five minutes. Dr. Grace, thank you for your kind words. And really, my team is doing great work. Brandon edited the video, but Charlene, Gosin, Anya Almond both contributed to it, and they are doing great things. They're also doing a lot of work on the website, and I just have two items that I want to show you as we try to create more content on the website to inform people, and also create more ways to get to that content. So if you can look at the screens, I'll show you just two items that I think are worth your time this evening. One is, this is below the picture, is the, it's called the channel bar. And you can see there's a button there for community, and if you go down, there is a place for find your elected officials. And that will take you out to this page, where we have compiled just a lot of information for our stakeholders to be able to be more connected with the people who represent them. And that includes you, but it also includes their representatives in the various municipalities that are a, a part of our district, as well as state and county representatives. So, just a, a tool to be able to provide more information for them. The other one you can find in the row below the channel bar are these global icons. And the last icon to the right is facilities and long-term planning. You can also get to this through several other places on the website, but this is, to me, the easiest place to find it. And if you click that, that'll take you out to a page that we'll be developing over time. Right now, it has the video from last Monday night. It also has the PowerPoint that was presented, the people that asked questions, the message from Dr. Davis announcing that evening. And we'll have other items that we'll add to it over time, too. It also encourages people there to use the feedback button, to connect with us, and to share their contact information, so that we can, so that we can keep them informed as we go forward. It's, we have contact information for people who have a direct connection with the district. Either they're an employee, or they're a parent, or a student. People in the community, unless they follow us on some of our social media channels, may not get some of that information. So if there are folks out there who want to learn more about this process, as well as anything else, if they'll get us their contact information, we'll keep them informed. So that's it, just a couple of quick items there. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or wrap things up, so that you can go home and go to sleep.
Any questions?
We're in work.
Thanks, and have a great team.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for the end of the business. None? Meeting adjourned.